I call this meeting of the Brookfield Select Board to order at 6:19 PM on today, Thursday, August 24th. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, let's see. Kelly, we didn't have any announcements today, do we?
No, they're on the sheet underneath the one on top.
Nope.
I don't see them.
Just an old copy of the agenda. All right, so that moves on.
Do you have an announcements folder? She might have put them in your folder.
I don't think so. It's...Karen's on vacation. No, I've got a correspondence, but I don't see any announcements.
Okay.
Let's see, and report on warrants, which we don't have. I don't have the numbers.
No, we don't have the numbers.
Okay. So, we can just defer the report out. We can do a bigger warrant report in two weeks, right?
Yes.
That's fine. We'll get it out. All right, so that brings us to the first item on the agenda, a hearing for the liquor license transfer regarding a transfer of license. So, I declare the, I declare the hearing on this matter now open. So, Kelly, is it us asking questions? I've, this is my first one. Beth?
Oh, it's been a dog's age since I've done a liquor license, so...
I can give a summary.
Can you just give a summary, give a summary of the application and, and the locale?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Board. My name is Matthew Porter, I'm an attorney at Bure and De Jump, Lippin, and Southeast of Mass. Along with me is Jagisha Patel. Ms. Patel is one of the principals of MJ Swami Baba LLC, which is the applicant before you today. Also with us is Twinkle Patel. Ms. Patel is also a 5% shareholder, she'd be the life-
Excuse me? Would you slow down just a second? I'm really not used to taking minutes.
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And, and, and sir, you hear the rate of speed at which I speak? I listen at the same rate of speed.
Alongside with me today is Jagisha Patel. Ms. Patel is one of the principals of MJ Swami Baba LLC, which is the applicant before you. In addition to Ms. Patel, Ms. Twinkle Patel is here as well. Ms. Patel would be the proposed license manager, meaning she'd be the person equipped with the day-to-day operations at the store 40 hours per week. So, it's a very straightforward transfer. There's no changes to the business whatsoever, no changes to the structure, no changes to the hours. Again, this is for Bay Pass Spirits at 21 Maple Street. This is an experienced operating group. They've both grown up in the industry, their families own several liquor store locations, so this is an opportunity to purchase their first store. But, like I said, there should be no changes from a day-to-day operations standpoint. So, certainly with that, I can answer any questions that the Board may have, and Mrs. Patel and Ms. Patel can as well.
Okay. So, when you, so effectively, there'll be new ownership, but from a, it's like if you didn't know the new ownership change, you would expect to be minimal change from the cost per cent.
Correct.
Obviously, they'll run it a little differently.
Yeah, yeah, they'll bring their own expertise in, you know, probably stock different inventory, try to bring in, you know, their own touch to it, but as far as hours and operation are concerned, there's no changes to the, to the business overall.
Okay. And then, for, for the, for the, to the qualifications of the, of the managing operator, Ms. Patel?
Sure, Ms. Patel, yeah, she grew up in the industry. Her parents have owned several businesses over the years, she's worked in the stores. She's currently a clerk at one of the stores right now. She has a very clean record, she is alcohol tip certified, as is Jagisha Patel, meaning they've taken all of their alcohol certifications, so they certainly understand the rules and responsibilities that come along with that. In addition to that, from a safeguarding standpoint, they will have a scanning machine in place, they use state-of-the-art scanning machines, and their policies generally card everybody, they'll scan it right through and just make sure there's no underage sales occurring at all.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, through you, can I see the, the paperwork that was submitted while you're talking?
Yeah. There you go.
Thanks.
And is this the, is this the first time as the managing or responsible party for, for Ms. Patel?
This would be her first store that she'd be managing, yes.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, just want to, just want to understand the situation.
Sure.
Okay.
Guess what, how if I actually use my reading glasses to read stuffy?
That's why we put them there for you.
I know. I did, I actually brought my own today.
You can double them up if it gets blurry.
Okay. It looks like all of the, all the prerequisites are met.
Mm-hmm. And then, I guess the, the only other question I have is that I expect that there's a liquor license involved, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission at the state level is also involved.
Uh, I think for transfers, that's not as-
I can explain that process.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, sure. So, the, the application that is before the town is actually the state application. How it works in Massachusetts is the full ABBCC application is submitted to the town or municipality. Upon your approval, your office then sends that application up to the state. So, they're reviewing the same exact application, which is, takes about four to six weeks for the state to get through it. Once the state approves a license, they will let the town know that the state approval's in, and at that point, the, the town would issue the liquor license of the owner.
Mm-hmm, okay. So, it's a sequential way, but we go first?
You're first.
And it makes sense, I mean, someone's got to go first.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion, we approve the transfer to license?
Second.
All right. Any more debate? Seeing as there's none, all in favor of transferring the license, approving the license transfer request?
I think you just have to open it up to the town.
That's true. Yeah, we've got the motion for the second. Is there any, any questions or, I'm sorry, that's your meeting.
Are there any, would anyone in here at the hearing care to comment on the matter at hand?
Are they buying the real estate as well?
They are, yes.
Okay, so the whole package is?
Yes.
And, just so the audio picks up, the question was, are the applicants purchasing the real estate at that site? And the, the answer to that was yes.
Does that come with the billboards? Is that on the same property or no?
That I can't speak to. Yeah, I'm not sure. Have to look into that.
Yeah. Ms. Holgraf, were you asking about the billboards that face the eastbound traffic on Route 9? On the, on the border of the Old Brookfield Motors property, what Tassie owns now? Those are the ones?
Yes.
Okay.
They're on his, they're on Tassie's?
I, I don't know whose they're on, I'm just saying they, but I see them on the edge of Tassie's property, I just don't know if they're on his edge or on the edge of the neighbor's property.
I don't think they want you to use them.
I've got my own signed video.
He has all he needs. All right. Are there any more questions here? All right, seeing as there's not, we have a motion to approve the transfer. And second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the transfer is approved, 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Do you need anything, or is it all going to ABBCC?
I spoke to Karen.
Karen, Karen.
Yeah, so she says she's going to be back on Monday.
Yeah.
Basically, a portal that it gets submitted through, like, so you guys don't have to do anything at this point. There's like an LLA, like a approval form.
Yeah, local licensing authority, so it's in there. It probably has this little sign sticky on it.
Yeah.
I do, I do have a piece of paper with a legal sign, with a sign here thing.
Yeah, I think all, I think the whole board has to sign that.
Tess has to sign that.
All right, then I'll get-
Okay, thank you.
Thanks all.
And then, when you're done with the packet, just hand it down this way, so.
All right. You're welcome. Congratulations, welcome to town. There, you need, there you go. Can I borrow one?
Take one, I don't use those.
All right, agenda?
I know, I usually am.
Beth, did you sign?
I did.
All right, good.
Back this way.
That way, please.
Oh.
It's like, if it goes to me, it's just going to die. We don't want that. All right, next up on the agenda, the Central Street project. Ryan, would you join us, please? How you doing, Ryan?
Good, how are you?
Doing well. All right. We received your, your written summary.
Yep.
And I know that I had some questions that I sent to you, and so, and we discussed some of them, but I'm going to, I'm intending to ask them again to make sure that they, that they get covered in the record. And, but I guess I will invite the other Board members to go first, since I've already had a crack at Ryan.
My job wants to start, kind of go ahead.
So, Ryan, the, the first question I had, and, and this question really came to us, and I should have reviewed my email, I had, I had meant on reading all the detail that's in there, and I'll be very frank, I did not do all of my homework. So, if a lot of this is retread, and you've already answered it in writing, then forgive me upfront, okay? So, my understanding, when we went over the two plans, very far up front, was that we selected the one that actually maintained parking for the preponderance of Central Street. And I don't recall there being bike lanes down where we have them painted currently, because we had opted for the plan that had the multi-use path in lieu of the bike paths, because parking is such a premium in our tidy little town. So, can you help me understand what happened there?
So, one of the plans showed a shared use path, you remember that?
Yes.
So, the shared use, the shared use path counts as a bike lane, and that's why we did that from halfway through, halfway from Pleasant Street to Common Street is where the shared use path is.
Okay.
There was no getting around not having a bike lane beyond that towards the school.
Okay.
We, we had to have a bike lane in that area, because there, there's no other room to do any other option.
It's a requirement of the Complete Streets Grant that you have some bike lane.
Okay.
The shared use path, I, I think is what you understood.
Yeah, I thought it went all the way down, the, would all be all the way down to the intersection. That was my understanding on it, so.
If that was possible, we would have done it.
Ryan, could you clarify the difference between a bike lane and a shared use path?
Yeah.
Because I'm hearing those and I'm big.
So, a bike lane is generally within the road?
Okay.
And a shared use path is a combination pedestrian sidewalk and bike lane.
Okay, so-
And that's why it's wider.
It's a, it's a, it, you could, I could, I should think of it as an extra wide sidewalk so there's room for bicycles?
That's correct.
Or that's a fair way to think of it. Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah.
And so, I'm guessing, in front of Town Hall, it's a shared use path because we, because there are the parking spaces there?
That's correct.
And then, further east, it's a bike lane and not a shared use path?
Yeah.
Because it's basically, we're going to have one or the other along the entire stretch of the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, now, don't confuse those parking shoulders, like down by your house and on the opposite side of this across from the Town Hall, that's not a bike lane. I think that was part of the confusion, that's a parking shoulder.
Okay.
Okay.
And my question would-
Yeah, that might be part of the confusion.
Then, could, excuse me, Brad, then can you clarify what sections of Central Street are, have a bike lane on them?
From Pleasant Street down.
Pleasant Street. Oh, Pleasant Street, that's a street that goes down to Mill Street.
Yeah.
And into the school, yeah.
Yeah, from Pleasant Street all the way to-
I actually brought the, this will help you guys, I think. This is the intersection of Pleasant Street.
Oh, yep.
Here's where the bike lane begins, and here's where the shared use path starts also. It kind of goes off the road, onto the sidewalk, and down.
Okay.
So, that is the official striping detail, the painting.
Yeah, and I can see here, on the south side of Central Street, there is an area marked parking shoulder, which is in the roadway, but that's the white stripe on the other side of the street. Okay. Yeah, I was, I was not clear on that, I was, yeah, with the, I thought the white line indicated bike lane, and there was a bike lane across the street.
Yeah, it is a little bit confusing, but the bike lane is only designated by the little bicycle symbol.
Okay.
If you don't see that, it's not a bike lane.
Got it.
And one of the questions that I had brought up before, and I see it here in the plan, that it says seven feet for the parking shoulder.
Yes.
Did you take a look and remeasure it by chance?
No, I believed your measurement.
All right.
I did believe your measurement.
What'd you get?
Six feet, eight inches.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't disagree, it's narrow, but we, you know, we only have so much road width, so, and we had to fit all this in.
But I think the issue that I'm concerned about is the liability, and there was an incident that occurred today. I don't know if you were notified at all?
No, I didn't know about it.
So, somebody made a complaint because they came to park at the Town Hall, they were parking over at the shoulder. She wanted to make sure she was within the lane, and in doing that, she-
Sliced through her tires.
Sliced through her tire on the curbside, and, and has a complaint that the parking isn't wide enough to hold a vehicle. And I don't know if we're removed from any liability for something like that, but it's a concern.
Well, it depends on the size of the vehicle and your ability to use mirrors.
I don't know what the suggestion is.
Yeah, I mean-
I don't know if this is something you guys want to do, I, I don't-
I don't know if we need to contact the painting, I don't know.
So, the, the painting company went by the engineered plans, which is in your hand?
Yeah.
The engineer is who designed the, the striping or the painting?
Right. And from what I saw online, parallel parking, I don't know if that's different than parking shoulder, is supposed to be a minimum of eight feet, but hopefully engineers, I don't know if we want to contact the engineers or get clarification on that?
On whether it means spec?
Right.
Okay.
What spec?
On the mass.gov website, it says eight feet for parallel parking spaces.
Wow, you can't do that on Central Street.
Right.
You wouldn't get another gift for that.
No, but-
You have to make it one way.
The question becomes-
You have to make the road one way.
I didn't have a problem.
Yeah, but the question becomes, is that a requirement or recommendation?
And if I park it around my tire, it's on me.
Right.
And well, and, and I'm kind of of that opinion too, because my car-
This is like a non-issue.
Yeah, my, my, my car, if I, if, my car, if I park it along the line, both of mine fit, but if I had a SUV, obviously, it might not, so.
And that's what this was.
So, I mean, the lines are like a recommendation, it's not, you get a parking ticket for parking on the line.
Oh, no, I know, I understand that.
People take it for literal, it's, it's a recommendation.
Yeah.
All right, so, Ryan?
Yep.
With regards to the, the project, when the project went out to bid, there was, there was a base portion of the project, and there was an add alternate portion of the project.
Correct.
Add alternate, sorry, term, right?
Yes.
Okay, which I bucket as, it was an option that the town could take. Now, what was the scope of the add alternate?
The add alternate was to, to construct and install a sidewalk from Common Street to Charman Street.
On the south side of Central Street, across from Town Hall?
Yeah, which was not existing. It was added.
All right. And when, and when, and when did we, when did we decide to go with that? To, to put that add alternate into the project?
Basically, when the bids came in, within the budget that we were expecting, the engineer's estimate.
At what point were we within the budget?
As far as I know, the whole time. Were we not?
How much was the budget? What was the bid, how much was the bid against 2020?
690, 696,050 dollars.
What was the total cost?
You had the last page.
Excuse me, please.
Hannah.
Now, there was two different things that happened here. We had a contracted, with, a contract with precise paving for a portion of the project, and then, we completed the paving within the town, under the town road materials, the million and paving. And we did that to save money.
So, according to the estimate I see here, the project estimate was for a touch over $1 million, which included police detail, the construction estimate from the engineer, an estimate for ma, for mass broken stone building paving estimate. Was that an estimate, how much would cost the town to do the paving?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, the, the engineer's cost?
Yep.
And so, all those together was $1 million, and the final cost of the project, according to your numbers, was 938,000 dollars, 938,000 and not quite 400 dollars.
That's right. Yep.
So, we went with the, we went with the, with the add alternate one at the inception of the project, and that was in, and that was baked into the contract that the board signed?
That was, that was the 696, 50.
Okay.
That was the whole cost.
Right. And, I believe add alternate one was in the 45 to 50,000 dollar range?
Yeah, roughly.
I've seen the number, I just forget exactly what it was.
Yeah, I don't have that number in front of me.
I, I found them, my numbers.
There you go.
It was 49,275 dollars.
Yep.
So, I think one of the questions that, that I have is, when the project was presented to the Select Board, was it ever, how, how was that broken out? Was it broken out that the contract included add alternate number one, or was it just presented as a single project? As those are, this is all we're doing?
I think it was presented as the entire project, because that's, that was the goal, in my opinion, was to do the whole project.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's what I planned on doing.
Then, what was the purpose of carving out that portion of the project into add alternate one?
The add alternate was for bidding purposes, basically, so that if the bids came in much higher than expected, we could cut something off to still do the project and not have to redo the bidding process, because the bidding process would cost, that would have a cost to redo it.
It gave us a sacrificial portion of the project, that we could just sort of say, the whole thing's costing too much, cut this part out, and we can still fit into our budget.
Yeah, and, and at this point, we had, we had been awarded grants, a Complete Streets and a Shared Streets grant. We had the money sitting there, it was ours, so it was important to me that we could do the project, because I knew that there wasn't much other.
Yeah. According to your report, we, the grants totaled 556,000 dollars and a little more?
Yep.
Okay. And so, based on the estimate, that left us about 450,000 dollars of short, that we have to find another funding source that, since it wasn't covered by grants?
Yep.
Okay. And so, I mean, and-
So, that was chapter nine.
Yeah, and I, and I think that may have been part of what was a challenge for me, is that I think when we voted the contract, I think I had it stuck in my head, it was that 696, with it, with there being maybe some missed opportunity at structuring it in a way to make it clear that we had another $300,000 committed as part of the project.
That's, I got, I got the feeling that could have been what happened, from, from looking things over. And so, and so I think that's something that-
So, I, I have minutes from a Selectments meeting that I came through that-
What's the date?
It made me under the impression that the rest of the ARPA money was to be used to complete Central Street after the water, the water project was done.
Okay. What's the date of the meeting?
February 1st, 2022.
Okay. I, yeah, I see here in the minutes, there's a statement in the minutes, Ms. Coughlin entertained a motion to designate ARPA funds for the town's upcoming water main project and Central Street project. Mr. Jola Kerso moved, Ms. Coughlin seconded, so voted.
Right, and, right, but at the time, there was no numbers in that, and it was not intended to be a blank check. There were numbers presented at that meeting, but I don't know why they didn't get included in the minutes at the time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then, do we know what date the bids were opened? Do you know off the top of your head, or roughly? Specifically, was it-
I think we may not have had numbers at that point, because is that, is that date prior to-
That was way prior to-
Wait, that was way prior to the date, so-
Oh, yeah, no, I know, no, I'm, I'm looking ahead to other minutes that discuss this matter.
So, and I, I do want to just like make one statement, one of the reasons why we did the, now, now that I'm looking at the date, I remember why we were doing what we were doing. So fundamentally, you can't go out to bid unless you have a reasonable expectation that you'll be able to pay what the bid comes back. You don't necessarily have to take any of the bids, but you have to have a reasonable expectation that you have a funding source for it.
Right. You, you can't solicit bids and hope the money magically appears.
Correct. So, in order to, I think, I think we were looking at it at that point from a standpoint of, and to, to facilitate that process, that we would earmark some of the ARPA money and see what it came back versus what the, the grant, available grant money was.
Mm-hmm.
So, just to be clear. That was, that vote was for the purposes of going out to bid, it wasn't necessarily a, a blank check to approve, you know, whatever ARPA money was required to close the gap.
Mm-hmm.
Because if that was the case, you wouldn't have all those other votes.
Yeah. And then, I'm looking at a, I'm looking at the, an excerpt from the minutes on June 14th, and-
The bid was open June 2nd.
June 2nd?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So, this, this meeting was after the bids were opened, and it says, Mr. Parpren told the Board he estimated the total project, total cost of the project to be 850,000 dollars. So, which seems, that, which I don't see as quite aligned with the $1 million estimate, so I'd like to, I, give me-
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
I mean, my, because we had a bid in, at that point, we had opened the bid, and the bid was for 696,000 dollars or so from precise paving, and we had a projected cost from, I'm guessing at that point, we only had a projected cost from mass, mass broken stone, because we hadn't done the paving yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, those numbers could be a little misconstrued, because I did have a Chapter 90 request in for 140.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe I was saying that I need 850, including the ARPA and, and the grant money. I, I don't know the context, how that was discussed.
That's fine, I mean, I'm, I mean, also looking at the numbers, I would say, based on, if you added up the precise paving cost, the police detail cost, and the estimate for mass broken stone, you'd come out around 850. And so, it's like, so, to my mind, there are a couple of different ways to break it up, but I think fundamentally, in that, we were not, the Board at that time, and Beth, you can talk, you were there, so if I'm, if I'm putting something out there that didn't happen, it seems like Ryan might have been talking about how much the work would cost, not the whole project. And the Board was thinking it was a project cost, not a construction cost, because on top of the project, you've got your engineering costs. On top of your construction costs, you have your engineering costs. so if I'm mis, if I'm putting something out there that didn't happen, it seems like Ryan might have been talking about how much the work would cost, not the whole project. And the board was thinking it was a, a project cost, not a construction cost. Because on top of the project, you've got your engineering costs. On top of your construction costs, you have your engineering costs.
Yeah, I think we've got a lot of lessons learned that we need to, to, to talk about. And I think one of them specifically is, is if I'm not taking anything from anybody relative to a vote without a piece of paper with their plan in front of us, in all aspects of it, ever again, period.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Did the outcome of this project put the town in a bad position?
So, I would consider it an opportunity cost scenario, Ryan. So, there was, we had a, a certain amount, and we're not spent through it yet. And we have some other things earmarked for it, for the ARPA money, okay? I, I think where the challenge is, in spite of the, I think in spite of the, uh, public meeting, and in spite of going over the plans, I think in the effort of wanting this project being way overdue to get done, I think that we missed some opportunities to recognize the impact to the community. So, I think the focus was on the project and the project execution, and not necessarily about doing as thorough a job on, on impact. So then, when you're in a scenario where you both have a sense of having spent more than what was actually verbally authorized, and have people upset with the results, it makes it like, it, it, it does, I don't know if we put the, the town in a bad position. I mean, financially, the town is strong, right? Uh, overall, we would have been able to execute a number of things that have been in our backlog for years, right? But if we're gonna wait to do them, we need to make sure we get them. Like, kind of the way that people have in their heads, and it's, have you ever seen that project plan thing about computer programming? Where it's like what you wrote the requirements for is like a tire swing? And what you get is this like, really like, like...
I know which one you're talking about.
Backwards sort of thing? I feel like we're almost in that scenario where on paper, it looked good, on paper, it looked right. And then we, we get this beautiful million dollar project delivered, and everybody hates it, right?
Yeah, that's disappointing to me.
Yeah.
That's really disappointing.
It's up to him whether to take the comment or not, so...
I mean, yeah, it's, I mean, and, I, I mean, I say, I wasn't here for the planning of the project. And where I live, the details of the Central Street project weren't particularly relevant to my day to day life, so I wasn't paying that much attention. Ms. Chafee, you have a question?
Yeah, you know, I've looked at it pretty much my whole life. I don't love, right, I, I don't love what was done. I would like to see it go right back to the way it was, right? Finished new, but the way it was, because I went to Brookfield, the way I remember it as a kid, it doesn't look like that. However, as I grilled Ryan over it, he says, we couldn't have the grant, we couldn't have the funding, and we wouldn't have been able to do it.
Yep.
So, based on that, that's, that's one part. But then the other part, the selectmen has quite a bit of fault here. Because you're saying you didn't know what the funds were, like, how do you not know? Like, we got one bid of six hundred and ninety six thousand that I just said, but, like, and you knew about that, right? But why didn't you know about the rest? And how come, like, you guys are the approving authority, I'm not sure who was here at the time, so I'm not trying to blame. But it's good constructive criticism the next time, and you, you may...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to alleviate the, the board of having some of the responsibility here. However, we don't, we get the communication that we get, right? And I think this really brings forward the fact that we need to get better.
Well, you need to know what you're spending before you spend it.
Right, right.
And, and how did that happen? Like, how did, like, I mean, we can check it every time, but I mean, again, the three selectmen are really the ones that...
So, so fundamentally, what we thought we were spending is what we voted on the fourteenth of June, which was the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? That's, that's what fundamentally was our understanding, that's what showed up in our minutes, right? The piece of it that appears to be missing, right, was that, was that, and, and it sounds like the conversation between Ryan and, and, Tom has, has gotten there, is that there was a portion of the project funded, funded under chapter ninety that wasn't functionally included in the, the numbers that we were talking from the standpoint of that project management.
So, overall, was there any big numbers that the project over, like, went over? Other than the fact that you missed, was there any other big numbers to like a million dollar grant?
I would, I would say, from, from what I have seen, I would not say, the, the project came in at budget. We achieved our goals at budget. The, the big concern here is that it's not, what was delivered is not quite what some people expected, and it's different, it's like close, but just not different enough that some people don't like it. And the other issue is the funding, is the thought, well, it's like, the project came in based on the estimates I see here, but I think there was a communication issue, so that these, so from what I understand, the select board thought that only this much of the ARPA money was going to be needed to get the project done, and we needed this much. And that was something that we weren't expecting, it wasn't on our radar. And so, when Ryan came and asked for it, it was sort of like, what, wait, I thought this was, I thought we had set aside all the money, and, and Ryan? And that's, and that's a communication issue, communication is a two way street. But I, and so, I'm, but I'm just telling you that when that request came in, that's, and I think you caught it, is that we were just like, what, what do you mean, you need more money? We didn't, and that's when sort of the, the gap in communication started to be uncovered. It's like, but that was earlier this year. It's like, I don't, maybe it was, I think it was April.
Yeah, and the project never should have gone as long as it did, but there was issues with getting the granite, which carried us through a winter.
Mm-hmm.
It would have been much quicker, easier if it was shorter timeframe, I think.
Yes, and then, and then you mentioned the, the granite, the, the lack of a granite did cause us to have to lower the utility structures for the winter for, so that the highway drum could plow, and then re-raise it. And was, was that a big impact on the project cost?
Not really, it was kind of a wash, because there was other things, like we saved money on the police detail. We didn't use the whole estimated cost.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we used like twenty, twenty-three thousand instead of fifty-two, so...
So, it's, it's like, so we increased the cost of the project, but savings elsewhere kept the whole project on budget.
That's right.
But it was an unexpected expense.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, and, and, and it makes sense, it's like, yeah, if the granite, if you can't pay before winter, you gotta be able to plow the streets, and, and you can't have the manholes two inches up.
Yeah, there wasn't yet, any getting around that, unfortunately, the road was already milled, so...
No, that's, I, I, I understand, and I, it's like, we did the, we did what we could with what we had. If the granite come in on time, like you said, this...
If it was available. Yeah.
Yeah, and so, I, I, one moment. And so, I mean, so I, I, as I said, I, I'm, I concur with, uh, with Beth's recommendation that for large projects like this, we should have, um, the, the select board needs to be diligent in ensuring that it has been fully informed of the expected funding sources for things like this, so that we don't, so that problems, issues like this don't pop up or surprise that, that the project cost, that the project that gets completed, consistent with, with the estimates that were made in the beginning, are then that the funding's already been identified, and we're not scrambling to find money. Uh, let's see, um, sir, you had a question?
Yeah, that, okay, so I own, uh, central sixteen Central Street since nineteen eighty seven. I've lived in Brookfield my sixty-nine years.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm very happy with what is done on Central Street. I mean, I dealt with parked up sidewalks and people tripping on stuff, and not getting them to park decent, poles that were bent. I mean, to me, it's a hundred percent improvement. Now, I, I rec, I commend them for doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
As a, as an owner on this street.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Mike?
And, and I would just like to reiterate that. I, I think it looks great, I don't have a problem with it. The, the road's never been so smooth, and sidewalks, this was a, a long time coming project, we completed it.
Yep.
We should be happy, and I, I commend Ryan too. And, you know, I just gotta say, Ryan's been really helpful to us with the cemetery. Anytime I've ever had to ask Ryan for anything, he's been right there. I think the cemetery commissioners can agree with that, some paving committees made some great recommendations. And I'm, I'm very much support Ryan.
Okay, no, thank you, I, I...
Good job, and I don't think we hear that too much, or as much as we should with some, some folks around here. And, um, I, I just want to say that, that's all, thank you.
No, I, uh, thank you for that, I, I, I concur, it looks great. It, it just, we, we have, we do get some feedback that it's like, there are some, I guess I'd say, my, uh, dissatisfactions with parts of the project, like, there's a concern with, like I said, with the concern with the street width. And so, it's like, but we couldn't, we couldn't leave it untouched. And as, I forget, someone pointed out, it's like, in order to get the money to be able to do this, I think it was Mr. Chafee, in order to get the money to do this, we did have to put those bike lanes in. And so therefore, to be able to do this, we did have to give up some of what we had. Um, Mr. Chafee?
One last thing, uh, I asked Ryan about with the, it appeared more narrow to the median as well.
Mm-hmm.
Ryan, Ryan said it's within a couple inches of the same width, right?
It's, it's within two inches.
So, it's deceiving, when you get that new pavement, it looks totally different than the old, you get the new strength.
The parking stalls, the parking stalls are longer.
Oh, really?
Because that's part of the code, I guess it would be.
The stalls, you mean the, uh, the angled parking spaces, they stick further onto the street?
The angled parking sticks out further, because that's, um, it's probably, you know, a compliance thing or whatever, I don't know.
And the, the shoulder line on the other side, did we have a shoulder line before? Or was it just pavement onto, just straight onto the shoulder? Yeah, and, and I can understa, I can understand that that would, would visually make the road seem narrower because you don't drive to the right of the white line.
So, basically, when you get a complaint like that, I think you gotta tend to dismiss it rather than act on it. Similar to the curb, right? If someone runs a tire from a curb at Walmart, it's nonsense, they're not gonna go to Walmart, and Walmart's gonna give them a new tire, right? I mean, it's just nonsense, so...
Just to be clear, that the woman was not asking the town for anything.
No, it was, no, it was just, it was just reported, it's all that was...
It was just reported that she, that, that the curb, she didn't fit in the lines, she was in an SUV, she was an older person. And she was not angry with the town, she was frustrated that she didn't fit.
Sure, so then, then I just wanted to expand on my comment about the street that I stop in the highway about maybe once, twice a month. I literally see this guy and the rest of the help down there, take a truck that our previous highway law said is junk, and we need to get rid of it, nineteen ninety-one truck.
Is that the one that we saved two hundred and thirty thousand dollars because we didn't buy it? That was an epic, right?
I asked them rebuild that truck for fifteen grand.
Yeah, that was...
And I would probably drive that truck. I have a nineteen ninety-three truck that's very similar, that these guys need to be commended for what they do, because they're saving the town a ton of money.
Mm-hmm.
You go to West Brookfield, you get brand new trucks, you go to North Brookfield, you find brand new ten wheels, and they're working out almost three hundred thousand, it's, it's more like two eighty, not two thirty. And probably with the right, uh, body on it, the standard, it's probably over three hundred. So, I think these guys need a little more pat on the back. You know what, you guys are in charge of the whole town, and you probably, you've got a lot going on. It's a big undertaking to, to, to watch over every department, and I get it. But that's the biggest department, and I think those guys need it out of the way once in a while.
Hmm?
Like, they're doing a good job, so that's, that's it for me.
All right, thank you.
I think the biggest problem on Central Street is the bike, people see that bike line, and that's what draws everybody off, saying the street's skinnier now, it's not as wide, you know, why do we have the bike path? I think that's what is upsetting most.
Well, and I, and I think the other concern with the bike lane is people along that side of Central Street park where that bike lane is.
Yeah.
And that can create a potential liability issue if someone's riding, if there happens to be that person riding a bike.
It's actually, it's actually illegal to park in bicycle lanes.
Right.
So, I don't, you know, if you...
So, the liability on the parker, not on the town.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't saying, are...
So, it may be one of those scenarios where they, they need to start writing warnings, and then escalate.
Yeah.
But we're right, one, please.
Yeah.
I mean, it's illegal to speed too, when everyone's doing it, they can't, they can't govern everyone, I mean, my God, leave people alone, like, who's realistically riding a bike down? You know, you can see a kid outside and be like, no, I didn't bike lane in the freaking Central Street. There was a requirement.
You should have seen my kid eat dirt all down his front.
So, it's a requirement to have it, so we do it, but do we enforce it? I mean, come on.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're drifting a little bit off topic, um, about what to do about the bike lane. I think the, the topic is more how we got the bike lane, and we can talk about what we're gonna do about it, uh, at another meeting. Because we are, uh, we do have a big agenda, and it's seven o'clock. I think, so, i- it seems to me that we, Ryan, as, on the next project, we're, we are going to be a little more diligent in working with you and saying, okay, what are your funding sources? What are your, what's your estimate? And just keeping an eye on things and making sure that it, that it continues to come in on budget. It's, uh, and then just, just making sure it's like, I think this discussion, a lot of discussion is happening because you had one vision of how things were gonna work out in your mind, and I think the, uh, select board at the time seemed to have, seemed to hear something different than what you were trying to tell them. And so therefore, getting it in writing and being a little more explicit and saying it three or four times in a couple of different ways, just to make sure everyone can triangulate and say, oh, yeah, that, yep, oh, wait, you meant that? We have a chance to sort of catch the, those gaps in understanding.
Yep.
But I mean, uh, what do you, what does the rest of the board think of this?
The good news is, I think I did the hardest project in the whole town, it's done. So, alright, so that's the news I have for you.
High five.
Tom, I still got that black paint, so...
Come on.
La, la, la.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't admit to having that black paint, Mr. Holcraft.
I didn't say what I was gonna do with it, I just designed it.
There's been multiple uses of various unnamed black paint around this town, I don't know if that's something I'd wanna advertise.
And then, how much money did in, oh, April, shh, April twenty, yeah.
I think that's where part of the confusion comes, is that there was, there was the original request, there was a total budget of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then there was the request for the, um, somehow it felt like there were two discrete requests for the ARPA money separate of the original request for the coverage.
Mm-hmm. Now, a question I have is that according to the minutes, on March thirty-first of this year, the board, um, allocated additional one hundred ninety-seven thousand of ARPA money for this project. And so my question becomes, and the, and according to, in your section here, Ryan, the available funding sources? That, that was post fact, it's like basically, this is how the project was funded.
Yeah.
This isn't date, this wasn't a forward looking statement, this is a backward, okay, and that, okay, that's cool. Um, so effectively, going in, we had under fifty thou, it's almost as though we had under fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money allocated to this project.
How much?
Under fifty thousand dollars because, well, not, well, I guess what I'm saying is, his request for more money is like, his, it seems like he's drawn two hundred forty-two thousand dollars of ARPA money for the project.
He's drawn three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and sixteen, according to the account.
So, what happened to the hundred forty thousand?
Three hundred and eighty thousand, six sixteen.
Kelly, I...
From ARPA?
Well, Kelly?
That's what, that's what Lori has from, on, in her records.
But the, that spreadsheet said that that could be commingling water, the water project and the highway project. Because on that spreadsheet, all, there was, there was a row for water and a row for highway, and there's a column for twenty-two and a column for twenty twenty-three.
Right.
And the water department row had a number in the twenty twenty-two column, and the highway department had a number only in the twenty twenty-three column.
Right, because the projects were done in two different years.
The water department was done in, okay, the water department, then...
I think we only spent forty thousand in twenty-two out of ARPA.
Okay, then, the, then the question becomes, if we use three hundred thousand dollars worth of ARPA money on a project for which we had five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars worth of grants, five hundred fifty-six, and how much was that? Three eighty.
The difference from what you voted, and this, this is Lori's spreadsheet, so the difference from what you voted was, you voted up to a hundred and ninety-seven.
Yep, so...
That was in June, was it June, or was it, was it in this year?
That was this year.
That was this year.
Yeah, I mean, just doing quick numbers, that...
The amount spent exceeded, was exceeded by a hundred and eighty-three.
Yeah, three, three hundred eighty thousand of ARPA money effectively completely displaces any need for chapter nine funding. The ARPA money plus the grants adds up to the project cost, or they're very close. So, do you know, did we spend any ARPA money, I'm sorry, did we spend any chapter ninety money on this project?
I wouldn't know that, Lori was just telling us how much the ARPA account was.
Okay, that's fine, it's like...
She actually wanted us to clarify, because it's over budget by a thousand something, two thousand dollars. It's over promised.
The ARPA money is over allocated?
Yes.
Yes, um, yes, I was...
That's, that's where this came from, it wasn't something that we were looking for, to show up in the email.
I'm, I'm very confident that the two forty-one, nine forty-nine is exactly what we used from ARPA, very confident.
Okay, but that doesn't change that they voted one ninety-seven.
Right, so, and the balance was...
We voted one ninety-seven after I'd already spent some. Because we, we had to pay, I believe we had to pay some ARPA money the prior year. But I don't have that in front, I don't know exactly, I, I can't, uh...
That would be...
And this is, this is the point, and this is the part of the confusion of the not having all of it in front of us at the time. And, um, again, right, so, did we spend the hundred and forty of the chapter ninety?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a, there is a small amount of money left right now.
But then why would the accountant be reporting that it num, uh, a, an ARPA expenditure that seems to displace the chapter ninety expenditure?
I don't think they're related, I think this is in addition to the chapter ninety expenditure.
But that puts the expenditure above, above the reported project cost.
Right.
So, you'd need an itemized list from, um, the accountant.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to go back and ask for.
And which department submitted it, to, to be very clear. And which department submitted it, to, to be very clear.
Was the water department.
Yeah.
No, they were finished.
The water department finished, the water department project finished in twenty-twenty-two, and so therefore, I think it's a reasonable expectation that the ARPA expenditure on Central Street would all be on the highway side of the project.
But, yeah, so because, because the ARPA has its own account number, right? So we would have to pull every single warrant.
You'd have to pull all the invoices.
That, and every single invoice going back through the two years to get that list of who came from what department.
And it would just be, we're specifically interested in water and highway in this case, right?
Well, that's the only thing we've spent ARPA money on to date that I'm aware of.
Okay, and then.
Because you see, there's nothing else expended on the list, so.
And then, since we're talking about ARPA money.
Excuse me, Tom, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
You have already got all of that information. You have that list, you're very confident in your number, right? So you could give us an itemized list of everything that was spent from one.
Yeah.
And I bet Polly has the same thing for the water department, so that might be the way to get it.
Yeah, we may wanna go from the department's.
I have an Excel spreadsheet of the entire Central Street project, every expenditure.
Okay.
It's all in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you sent, and you sent that over already?
No, my accountant.
Okay.
I can share it.
So I think, I think what we need you to do is share that to us and to the accountant, so that we can try to figure out why it, from a bookkeeping perspective, it looks like it's overspent.
Yep.
Because it sounds like that's where the disconnect is.
Yeah.
On a.
I don't think it's as bad as it looks. I think there's something else going on. I'm, Lindsay's very good at these topics.
That's, that's entirely possible, so, and that may be what, where we have the disconnect, is that you have it as being submitted against one accountant and it got processed against another, and, and it's a very hard.
People.
And, and that would be a very hard thing to catch, because we would be looking at the invoices, the invoice would match what was pulled, and we wouldn't necessarily know from looking at it that it was the right account to, to have it pulled out of, so.
So, I mean, but fundamentally, fundamentally, I think the issue is.
That's another country.
Which account paid for the project? And that if the ARPA account was used to pay for all these bills, that means that there's Chapter Ninety money that wasn't expended.
No, it doesn't. This is not, this is completely separate. So you got, you got two banks, you got two bank accounts.
Yes.
Part of the project came out of the road money, that's one bank, one bank account, right?
Yes.
You guys are agreeing violently.
This, this is, the, the ARPA money is completely separate. This does not counteract anything that has to do with the road money.
You guys are agreeing violently.
Are we agreeing violently?
Yeah, you're agreeing violently.
Okay.
You're actually both saying the same thing with different words.
With different words?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
The total expenditure is the same, it's just which account the money got, it paid for.
What, what it got tracked back to, and it sounds like what, what Ryan thought it got tracked back to might not be what it got tracked back to by the account. So I think we need to look at the list from the invoices.
So they were missing, and, and they were, they were just submitted, they were, they were missing, how's the name of the account, for the road war? There's missing Chapter Ninety requests for reimbursements that we just processed, but did that have anything to do with this?
They're not missing. The state couldn't process them. The state has an issue right now.
But I just signed them, so.
Those are going in again.
Okay, so, oh, so they were submitted prior, but.
They were trying to be submitted for July first.
Okay.
And this, the.
But are those part of this, so it looks like?
No, no. There's Rice Corner, there's Quaybach Street, there's other, there's a lot of other.
All right, I didn't know, maybe I, maybe this is where it is and why it looks like it's from one and not the other.
No, there's other, there's a lot going on right now.
She's just getting a glass of water.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I just.
You guys wanna put a bike lane on Green Street too, like that?
No, that's not, that's not a complete street grant, that's not a complete street.
We're gonna do another bike lane.
Yeah, that, that was, that was lesson learned. Contingent on the grant.
Yes.
And after the state signs off on it, who knows what happens with that bike lane.
You can only get one complete street for us.
You could put it to good use for the community.
So, to summarize, it seems like that everyone is, most people are generally happy with the project. We've heard some complaints about specific details of it, but I don't, I haven't heard anyone say that it looks bad, that it was done poorly, and that it reflects, that the job that the vendor did and the highway department did reflects poorly on Ryan. It's, I think that we have, we as a town specifically, the, I think this falls mainly on the select board, because it's like, things like this all come to us. It's not just highway, it's just this manifestation was on a project that was being run by highway, is that we need to be more diligent and more strict with ourselves, saying, we're not gonna, we're going to make sure we take a look at things a little more closely and make sure we fully understand the funding before we say, yes, we're going to do this. And that's, that's incumbent on us, and that's, that's a lesson learned to go forward, and I don't like to say we need more paperwork, but maybe we need one or two more things written down going forward. Beth and Brad, I've done a lot of talking, do you guys have anything that you wanna say that you haven't already said?
No, I think the only questions I had were in regards to the finances of it.
Yeah, I think we're good.
That was, that was.
Good to get some positive feedback, because all I've gotten is people, Dave, trust me, you're only getting a small portion of some of the feedback I've gotten, Ryan, so, I'll let the, I'll let the positive comments stand.
All right.
The, the one, the one ask I have is, since right now I'm the ad hoc accessibility person for the town until we find a real volunteer, at some point, if we can put on your future project plans, the, the chunk of sidewalk that they turned into a, a climbing gym, that would be great, so.
As far as that goes, we had to draw the line somewhere.
I know, I get it.
It's not too late, but we can still address it.
So, I get it.
What's that?
I was gonna say, if you have a ballpark.
Do we know how much it would cost?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have an estimate on what it would take to, to?
To fix it.
To fix that, to actually be in the right pitch for accessibility?
It's, it's probably like a fifty thousand dollar thing, something like that.
Where is this?
Literally right in front of my house.
Okay.
The pitch of the, so there's a particular pitch that's allowable for, like, handicap accessibility on sidewalks.
For the curb cuts?
For, well, not for the curb cuts, it's for, it's for the rest of it. So in, in order to get compliant on the curb cut, we went way non-compliant on the stretch leading up to the curb that's not part of the project.
Mm-hmm.
So it went from like, something that was probably a little bit steeper, and I think it showed up on the report even in its old state, it showed up on the report even in its old state as being like too steep going into that intersection, and it basically doubled the pitch that's on that particular stretch of sidewalk. So like, especially during the winter time, like, prior to, to snow clearing, like, if that's, when that ice is up, it's gonna be like a, a high entertainment value piece of territory, basically.
You're gonna, you're gonna put an outdoor camera up and start selling videos to American Family TV?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. It'll help pay for the, for the salt I'll probably invest in to try to keep the town out of trouble for that stretch of, of concrete, so.
All right, thank you. All right, so at this point, we have identified that Ryan is gonna go, or Ryan's gonna have Lindsay go through the, the invoices and identify all the accounts that were, that you requested that they be paid out of?
We're gonna, we're gonna share our spreadsheet with Lori directly, literally, so then she can look at what we have, and she can look at what she has, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, let's just do it, let's consider, tell her to consider it one of her department reconciliations, because I know we're supposed to be doing department reconciliations on a, on a periodic basis, so let's just do it for the project instead of for the month with them.
Yeah, let's get, yep. Okay, that, that works, because that, that doesn't require a vote from us, that's just something.
No.
All right, good.
No.
All right, and then pending the, the results of Lori, looking at that, we can revisit this matter at a future meeting.
If necessary, right?
Yeah, depending on the result, if, yeah, exactly, if necessary.
Okay, all right, I missed that. Got it, sorry.
No worries. Uh, let's see, all right, uh, does anyone else have anything to say on this matter before we go to agenda item number three? Excellent, moving on, uh, let's see. Grass mowing, all right.
Should I step down?
Uh, I was gonna say, you stay up here, Ryan, because you, we may need you to talk.
As long as y'all promise not to like play punch buggy while Dave goes up there to ask his question.
No.
Okay, come on up, sir.
Do you want me to come up?
Come on up.
Okay. Right before I'm there.
So, Mr. Hol, Mr. Holcraft, you have, um.
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. Could you, uh, in, in your own words, could you describe your concern to the, to the board?
Yes, I want, I own Seventeen High Street, which is on Nine, I got a four-hundred-foot frontage, and there's a strip of grass that doesn't belong to the town or me, and I've been cutting it, and I don't feel I should be cutting it when you people are cutting the common to Merrick Street, and you're also cutting all in front of the cemetery. You do not, the town does not own the land in front of the cemetery, the state does, and you're cutting that as well.
Mm-hmm.
So why are you not cutting mine?
Uh, let's see.
Because of Dave Holcraft? Because of my name?
You, you, you know that's a plausible explanation, but it's not the explanation.
I, I think it's a, I think it's a great.
Because, because we, we, we don't, we, we don't.
Who would have thought you'd have cared?
It's like, I don't, we don't, we don't, we don't. We won't own the cemetery because we're responsible for the cemetery, and at the risk of speaking for, someone doesn't like my voice, at the risk of speaking for, for Mike and the Cemetery Commission, I believe that as part of keeping the cemetery looking good, this, that the town maintains that state-owned land between the sidewalk and the roadbed in front of the cemetery. Now, with regards to that strip between Merrick Ave and River Street, there is, the town has historically.
Common, yeah, common.
River Street, common, so they come together at that point. There is a historic marker in that section. It is probably about a third of the way from River to Merrick, and I believe that the town has historically mowed that entire section because the historical, the historic marker is there, and therefore the town has an interest in mowing the area of the historic marker, and then just, we've just mowed the rest out of, out of sort of like not wanting to leave it ju, want, not wanting to leave it looking crappy.
Hey, can I, can I, can I give an example?
Sure.
The White House in front of me, even though I don't always get to do my lawn, when I do my lawn, I do the strip in front of them if they haven't gotten to it yet.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I, I think that's basically what you just described for the areas that we're mowing, is that we're already mowing in those areas for other reasons, so we hit the adjacent space.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know that we have any mowing efforts that are out where you're talking about. Do we have any mowing efforts that are adjacent to the space that he's talking about?
No.
So, you know, to me, it's a, it's a very, a very similar space.
And I wasn't here when we started mowing.
So people just mow it out of.
Yeah, yeah, so I had asked Ryan about it. Ryan said he wasn't sure why. I called Herb Chafee, because he was the prior, asked him if he knew why we did, and he said it was a matter of Alan Martell before him with that previous select board, that it was determined then that they should cut all that grass, and that's how it came to be. Now, if we wanna look through stuff for it.
So that's how it became.
That's how it became, that is what I was informed of, so.
How many years is that for the minutes, please? Because this is.
So, so, so going back, going back to the amount, that'd be like, that gotta be like forty years. That's, I mean, when you do those gazetas, we're talking probably four decades.
Well, I don't care if it's four decades or a hundred decades, the matter, the fact is, you cut two, two or three different strips and you're not cutting in front of my house. I don't get it.
But there's.
You gotta, you gotta, you keep saying about this, this monument, you just cut around the monument, and you don't have to cut all the way down, there's no reason for it. You cut around the monument, it's what everybody else does.
It sounds like the key is that where it's being mowed, there is a piece of town-owned property adjacent to it.
Yeah, that's right, that's up at the common in the corner, but the rest of the state, the state belongs to the rest, I checked with them.
But in the cemetery.
You're cutting the state property, and you're cutting in front of the cemetery, why can't you cut my strip?
We have no interest in the, we, the town has no interest in the property in, in that strip in front of your property. We have an interest in the property in front of the cemetery, we're responsible for the cemetery, and as part of.
Oh, excuse me, Tom.
Excuse me, could I finish, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
So as, thank you, so as part of maintaining the look of the cemetery, we mow the strip in front of the cemetery. The town has an interest in the historic marker between River and Merrick Street, so we mow in that area. We have no interest in that strip in front of your house, so we don't mow in front of your house, we are not going to mow in front of your house. We are, I will say it again, we will not mow, I, well, I'm sorry, I see no reason for us to mow in front of your house, I should not be speaking for the board, I speak for yourself. I see no reason we should mow in front of your house. We can discuss how much of an interest the town and how much the town should be mowing in the area of that monument.
Can I have an, an interrupt for a question?
Thank you, yes, I'd love to.
Okay, I already interrupted to ask one question, but I'll ask the second question while I inter, have you interrupted. Why do you think we should, other than the, mowing the other areas? What, what is your reason and what value would we be returning to the town to add to the mowing rotation, the, the place in front of your property?
Certainly, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do one for one, you do it for all. You don't just pick and say, I'm gonna cut this little piece, but I'm not gonna do this one, I'm gonna do that one too, but not that one. It's pretty logical.
So, so you're saying, so you're saying if we do these two areas that aren't necessarily town property, that we should mow every strip in front of every person in front of everywhere?
If, if, that's correct, if it's not their property and it's town-owned property, yeah, you should be doing it.
But it's not town-owned property, it's the state.
It's a state, right?
Yes, and so, and then the town, the town mows where the town has an interest. We don't have an interest in, in the front of your property.
Ah, but this, you're cutting state property down, but it's somebody, you're cutting up, you're cutting up Merrick, that's state property.
But we're not, but we're not cutting every piece of state property.
Dave, I will, I will say this again.
For some and not for others.
Dave, I was like, wait, this is not, this is not about you. I'm sorry, this is not about you. This is about, uh, excuse me, this is about where the town has an interest. We do not have an interest in front of your house, we have an interest in front of the cemetery, we have an interest around the historic marker. So therefore, we will figure out how to mow around the, in the areas we have an interest. Your property don't have an interest.
Right, but you, you want for one, for all, it's like you said, can you have a state mowed there?
Yeah, go talk to the state.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna mow it, I will not mow it anymore, so.
Okay.
So I have a question along these lines.
So if you want it to look like health in the town, that's your guys, that's up to you guys.
You already got the yellow sign.
The yellow sign has nothing to do with the grass.
No, but the...
And all the wash, and all of the, all of the brush and the nasty crap that's been on that property?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question, so...
Must be a reason for that, Beth, and there is a reason for it.
I have a question along the lines of something that I noticed is, and maybe someone else has the answer to this, the cherry trees that are, were planted along Route Nine, who is to maintain around the cherry trees? I think, I think they're cherry trees.
The towns are on cherry trees, yeah. The towns do it.
So...
But you've got an interest with them, but you don't have an interest in keeping the grass looking nice around the trees. That's what you're telling me.
So do you guys weed whack around those trees?
I, I don't know, I don't know the history of the cherry trees, um, and we don't maintain them, as far as I know.
Yeah, the, uh, apple seed put them in originally, and then I know recently, uh, we put out an announcement, Dennis, Dennis did a...
Dennis did the shade tree.
He did a bunch of the shade trees.
Cherry trees, everything, uh, west, uh, River Street is on, uh, state property. Everything east is on private property, and everybody that has a tree on their private property has been maintained.
Ain't them, yeah.
They maintain, and, and down here, uh...
So those trees technically aren't...
Everybody maintains them on state property.
Mm-hmm.
And if you wanna, I'll, I'll mow the damn thing. I saw it, I knew it, it looks like hell.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, so...
This property, I moved the state property.
Goodness!
So you, so you did what I do with twelve common?
Yeah.
You were, you were out with your mower and you hit it?
It takes me, it takes me or whatever I had to, fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
And show us too.
So, so, so someone did something for you for free, and you're complaining about the quality of the services delivered?
I am. I sent them a bill, they didn't pay me. But you're gonna maintain the cherry trees on state property, what you're doing.
No, I don't think...
We just said that we don't.
No, they just said they didn't.
I'm not sure, we could plant, you just planted trees in front of my house, three, four hundred dollars a piece, and then you came back, you mowled them? Yeah? And then you trimmed them?
That was donated from, 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 yeah.
That wasn't the, the town, yeah.
We bought five ourselves, I spent five of our... But I'm saying, you're still, you're still maintaining the output, you're still maintaining the cherry trees, but...
You're not listening, you're not listening to what we just said.
You are...
No, the town did not put them in.
Yes, Dennis and Ryan, all of them, they did it on...
The town did put those trees in. We absolutely put them in.
Absolutely.
But they're not maintaining them, it's, it's private donations that have done and gone and mowed and done and remained.
All right.
All right, so you're not, that's my, so that's my answer.
That, that is your answer.
Okay, that's fine. All right, what else, that's it?
I believe that's it for, for the, uh, mowing issue. Thank you, Dave. Uh, let's see. Uh, what I would, what, what I would like to, uh, Ryan, are you involved in the Cemetery Commission report?
Yes.
All right, then, then we can go, then we can go to that one next. All right, thank you, Dave.
How many people are here from the Cemetery Commission?
One, well, from the paving committee, one, two, three, and Ryan, four, five.
Is that a quorum?
It's a quorum, yeah. Did you post it as a meeting?
Oh, shoot.
Did we post, what is a meeting?
That you have a quorum here having a meeting?
How many's in here, how many's in here to meet? There's, uh...
Seven.
Eight of us.
Eight, that was eight, so five is a quorum, yeah.
So there's only two in here, so?
No, there's five. One, two, three, four, and Mike is five.
Mike's gone. No, he just told me he was leaving.
Oh, okay.
Are you making it a decision when you just started, or?
No, I just presented.
So, so it doesn't matter if it's a decision, open meeting laws, if you have a quorum and you discuss anything within your purview, is an open meeting violation.
We don't have a quorum.
If Mike is gone, then they do not have a quorum, and they can, they can stay and continue. But I didn't realize Mike was actually leaving.
Yeah, he told, he just told me he was leaving. Because I think you realize what was going on.
That's fair, that's fair.
He was rested, yeah, so.
Nope, so there's no issue.
Yeah.
So there's no issue.
Sorry, I just made a wrong move.
Okay.
And all we want to do here is, I'm Pat O'Day again, Chairman of the Cemetery Commission, and we just wanted to report on our paving committee results. Which I hope you got the letter ahead of time.
They did, yes.
I did read it.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So, that being said, with what was in the letter, everybody's getting along fine, we've come to the conclusions of what we want to do. The only issue we have is at the tack, at the last town meeting, it was brought up that this was gonna be done in-house. At the last minute, somebody from the stage said that it was. I didn't have time to get up and say, "No, it isn't," before it got voted on, so, um, and it's...
Water portion?
Everything. And the way it looks now is, we have to do certain work for the Historical Commission in a certain way, like the chip paving that we want to do, we can't use regular asphalt, we have to go along the Historical Commission's, uh, regulations, or they have a whole book of what you have to do, because it's a...
So that was determined in the, uh...
Yes, so we've got that all ironed out, but the problem is, I want the taxpayers to know that it's going out for bid, both water and, I mean, that, uh...
You have the water line?
Ryan's gonna do as much as he can, and Dennis is gonna do as much as he can for the water, but we're gonna have to do some horizontal drilling so that we don't make the cemetery a big mess with a lot of construction for the water.
Yeah.
So we found out that, and we didn't know that begin, to begin with.
Do, do we have, do we have the actual text of the motion and what we voted? Because even if it sounded like we needed to do it with in-house results, is that actually how it was voted?
Particularly, well, particularly at the last second, somebody stood up, and I don't know who it was, they asked if this was gonna be done in-house.
I was me.
Okay, whoever it was.
And we voted according to that, so.
Yes, yes, that's, that's what I'm bringing up.
Yeah.
So it was under the impression, and Donald Fagno even mentioned it to me, "Oh, we're doing this in, in-house," and I said, "No, Donald, that's a, that's bad, that's a bad situation." So I want, personally, I want the taxpayers to know that we need to send this out for bid. We're gonna do as much in-house as we can. Ryan's gonna do a lot of the bidding for the, inspects for the bidding for the paving that we need, and, but my biggest concern for this meeting is, the taxpayers have to know at some, some degree, or whether you have a special town meeting this fall and you want to let them know, or...
So...
It's up to Town Council and Selectmen to decide how that goes, because that's not gonna be on me.
Yes, no, that's, that's a political decision, and so I think it's most us.
So, so we're gonna, so, and I'm, and I'm wondering what's, what's the best way to frame it up in terms of it, but, but we're gonna have to have a special anyway because of the police contract.
Yeah, it's like, if we're having a special for police contract, then we can...
Do we want to revoke this, just put it on the warrant?
Well, excuse me, I don't think you need to revoke it, I think you need to clarify what it is, and then if you have an objection in the audience, then maybe it needs to be revoked.
But, but in order to be discussed, there has to be a warrant article, a, a, at the special town meeting.
Yeah, which we had.
In order to discuss it, we would have to have it, something on the agenda to vote on, which means we would have to have the vote.
So why wouldn't we just post a public hearing, that's a joint meeting between the Select Board, the Paving Committee, and just open it to the public and, and take the step of put, like, posting it in the paper or whatever, since it's a public hearing, to say, "Hey, this is gonna be clarification on the path forward for the article voted on X, Y, Z at the town meeting." And then if people care, they show up, if they don't care, they don't show up, and it is not our problem, because we made the attempt to communicate with the, with, with folks.
We, we, we announce it, and we give them, we give the voters in the town a chance to comment on it.
Right.
And, and, and based on the feedback, we then decide what we want to do.
Whether it needs to go on the special or not.
Yes.
Does, does that make sense?
So, that, that's brief, 'cause the more publicity, the better, the more you can get this out there, because you're not hiding anything, you want, obviously, obviously...
I mean, that's the last thing I want to do in this town.
'Cause I don't think we need to, but I, 'cause I don't think we need to wait for the special.
I know, when I have to do any bidding, it's a loose system, carry on.
Based on the vote you have, you were supposed to report to you, but did they say that you had the authority to move the project forward without it actually being voted?
That was my understanding, was that they gave us, that they gave us the authority to do so, right?
They gave us the权, but then they, they threw this committee together at the last minute, kind of ad hoc, to make sure that it was done, and they wanted a report. Are they anticipating a report at the next town meeting, or are they anticipating the work to be done and the reports be given to you? So it might be worth...
It was to the Selectmen.
Okay, so it might be worth listening to that section of the meeting over again.
Yeah.
You know, we've got the recordings.
From a, from a political standpoint, I would, whether we have, whether the text of the article empowers us to go forward or not, if a commitment was made on the floor of town meeting that it would be done in-house, and that is now changing, I like the idea of holding a hearing, informing the town, and giving people a chance to comment on that and express their cons, whatever concerns they have. And I expect people who don't have a concern are gonna say, I, they're not gonna show up, because they don't have a concern. Exactly, it's like, the people of concerns are gonna show up, and, and that, that, I, I think that is a sufficient fulfillment of our duty to the voters to inform them of this change of how this project's gonna be handled. And I think we have, we have a good reason for this change, it's not willy-nilly, it's like, we're doing things that can't, that we can't do in-house, we have to put it out to bid. And, I mean, I would almost say, it's like, if we, if we wanted to push it, we could say, "Yeah, everything that the town can do is being done in-house, there are things the town can't do, but I like the, but I would rather be upfront and disclose this and hold the hearing." I don't, I don't want to be told, I don't want to be accused of hiding things when I...
So if we, if we let, listen to, re-listen to the meeting, and get verbatim the discussion and the, and the vote, that will instruct us on how to pose the information in a hearing, and whether or not it needs to go back to town.
Meeting.
Meeting, and you can do the, you can do them both, there's nothing to stop you from doing it.
Yeah, we could do the town, we could do the, the hearing, and if, if we, we decide that it, it's enough of a material difference between what was discussed at town meeting and what we're doing, then, um, then we take it to the special, right?
May I ask you, Tom?
Um, just a moment, I, uh, you had me hand up first.
Well, it sounds like you, you don't have a resolution, but I mean, if you don't, you listen to it, I guess I might want to move, but... The way I remember it is that the, uh, the, uh, town voted and put this special committee together so that there's, that they report back to you guys, and you guys can make that decision based on our, our recommendation.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't remember saying that it was, we, that the town voted that we were gonna do it in-house. I think that committee was put together, so we say, "Hey, this is what we need, you guys can make that, execute it."
I mean, that's, that's how I remember it, but clearly other people were, were laser-focused in on, on some of the side comments, so I'm not, I'm not naysaying that the other stuff was said, okay, so, so don't get me wrong. I mean, I was looking at the end result, which was, we kept the budget, we voted the budget into the control of the Select Board with a, a, an informed board advising us on, on what's the right path forward based on all of the considerations, the historic and just the needs of the cemetery, right?
But it was kind of a two-pronged thing.
Yeah.
What you're specifically talking about is the paving, and the other prompt is the water.
Right.
And that's what was specifically said, in my reflection, was what was specifically said was housed and to be done, and then we said we housed the water. So as Cemetery Commissioner, I would like to see the air cleared.
Yeah, no, and absolutely.
In a public meeting, somehow, however we can resolve it.
Yeah.
Because the last thing I want to do is go behind somebody's back and say, "Hey, they did this because..."
Right, and, and I'm not saying we don't need, and I, and I'm not saying we don't need to do anything else, I'm just, I'm just saying is that I, I think, I think based on the discussion there, I, I think we're on solid ground if we well, do a well-advertised public hearing.
I'm okay with that, that's fine with me. I don't know about Karen.
Yeah, the, Mr. Chafee was right. The situation about using in-house or contract was just for the water. I don't think there was any discussion about whether we contracted out or the highway to it.
Yeah, because we're talking paving.
Yeah.
We don't have the means to pave it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was just the water was the...
Just the water piece of it, and we just, and we don't have that type of specialized equipment.
Mr. Olcraft?
Mr. Chafee, there's three prompts here. First of all, we allocated money set aside, and then the committee was gonna figure out how we were gonna do the road work. The vote was taken to have the water lines done in-house, that's how the vote was taken. Now, what you're talking about advertising it, letting people know, I don't know if that's gonna watch as far as protocol goes with the law, I mean...
I think we need to re, I think we need to review the video, and I agree with you.
There are interventions, I mean, I think we need to do it, that way it's on board with it, but I'm just saying the way the vote was taken, we should look into that.
Bye.
I'll, I'll get a clip and queue it up and send you each...
Yeah, I mean, because...
The section of the meeting and tell you where and queue it up to, to, to just listen to that section.
Yeah, 'cause I would say the, the text of the article that the meeting voted is binding. The text of the warrant article.
Yes.
And so, and there, and, and the commitment there, that's a, that is outside of the binding contract, but it's something that if we...
The text of the warrant article gave the money to the Cemetery Commission, not to the Selectmen, so that vote changed who's in charge of the funds.
Okay, it's like, yeah, but I, I guess my point is that the, um, if a, if a promise was made out, but it was, wasn't recorded in the article text, it's, it's like, it may not be enforceable, but my intention is, if that commitment was made, we will honor that commitment, whether the article requires us to do that or not.
You gotta listen to the resident.
Yeah, no, it's, it's the only thing to do.
Let me just clear the air, is, and on a, on another note, a better note, I mean, Kermit in the Historical Commission, and Chris with the Conservation and Water Department, and this young fellow right here, we work together fine, we can do consensus of what we want to do. So when we get this little incident straightened out, we can go ahead with the bidding and bring the bids to you, and...
So, so I have a question, is it, is it worth, how long are the bids typically good for? Because my question would be, is it worth timing the bids so that we, we maybe have some answers by the time of, either if we're targeting a date for the special or what have you, to make sure that our...
This, this wouldn't go out to bid until the spring.
So to your point, we're actually gonna...
Can't go out to bid until spring.
We're actually gonna do the work coming spring, because we realize with this problem and then other things we have, it's, it's just gonna be too hard.
Okay.
And so we want to bid it in the wintertime, so that maybe some anxious contractors will like to get the bid, maybe even get a little better price, you know? Um, and then we can do the water before we pave and, and get that all straightened out, so.
All right.
Just, just, Kermit, just to address your question, I think it would be a good idea if we could get what the cost is.
We can argue.
Somebody's gonna ask the question, "Oh, you're gonna have that built on our side, what's the cost of it?"
Exactly, well, that's, that's why I'm going there, Kermit.
Ryan, can we get, wouldn't the special in November?
We haven't set a date yet, but it would probably be early November.
What I would say is, you've already got the sixty thousand.
Right.
Do whatever the sixty thousand gets you, whether it's two or three roads, um, we don't know until the bids come out.
And that, that was what the Cemetery Commission planned, we were gonna, well, allocate that money, do as much as we can, and then follow up the following year if there's money available, we're gonna do that. And the same with the water, we probably won't be able to do all the water.
Right.
Well, I did state in that, uh, document that we were gonna discont, uh, remove the old piping, but we're not actually removing it, we actually figured out a way to repipe, so we're not gonna dig up the cemetery to remove the pipe.
So you're gonna reline, you're gonna redo, like, relining, basically?
No, no, we're just, again, it's just a rerouting of, of the line, so that we don't have to get into the older part of the cemetery and disturb that.
Yep.
And we found the rec, horizontal drilling's gonna be a better way to do it, uh, in, under the stone wall and stuff like that, and then, you know, regular construction work, so. Everybody worked together fine, we accomplished our job, I think.
Great.
Except for that little bit about, you know, going out house.
How much of an impact on our, like, what's, what's the cost increase of going with the horizontal drilling and the, um...
We don't, we don't have the numbers on that yet, but we figured we'd do what we could for twenty thousand dollars, and look at it before we spend the money or, or actually do it, but...
Okay.
Trying to get this problem behind us is our biggest issue right now, so that we can pursue what horizontal drilling's gonna do, maybe, maybe a thin backhoe bucket, and, you know, we're only going three feet eight, we could do that, but we have to look at all, all the particular, uh, ways to do it.
You have to, you have to look at the options and figure out which one's the best.
Yes, and, and being a historical site is what's putting a mind on everything. Since two thousand and three, we have to go through there, they have a whole protocol on how you treat the cemetery in the older part, so.
Kermit?
This is where I interfere a little bit, I, I don't like the idea, well, we got sixty thousand, so we'll do as much as we can. I would like to go back to you guys and say, "What we're gonna do for sixty thousand." And so, so you have an understanding of...
Well, well, that'll happen, Kermit.
In contrast, well, I'm saying before the November meeting.
Oh, do you know what the, but you don't know what the bids are gonna come out of.
Well, but can you get, if you, you can get a bid, can you get a bid?
I can, you have an estimate, I can do estimates.
You can't get a bid until you know you're gonna let it out for, for a price, so.
Yeah, but, but some of them will do like a ROM or a...
Yeah, we already got that, basically.
And, and with, with regards to the water, again, you know, uh, is twenty thousand for the materials, or is twenty thousand for materials on drilling, and so, and I think we should, so, I want you guys to go through the same thing you did with the road, we can give you half the information, and so I, me personally, I, I would like to give you as much quantitative information before that meeting.
Isn't there only eighty thousand put aside? That's it. So... I don't think that's a big... So if you got a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar bid, you throw it out, and you can't do it, you can only do it with the eighty thousand.
Well, well, seventy, sixty, sixty-one.
And twenty for that.
Please don't all talk at once, I can't take that.
Oh, sorry.
I, I think you guys should understand the, the process that I want to use to bid the work. And I'm not speaking for the water, this is strictly for the, the paving and chipstone, and we, we would do it like a price per ton for the asphalt, that's the, that's the number that the, the contractor would give us, is a price per ton installed, and then also a price per square yard of chipstone installed. That way, we have that number, we can add or subtract the quantities to meet our needs, to fit the budget. And that, and that's the only way I can figure to do it, so that, you know, we, we can add or subtract, do, you know, complete a road, and then say, "Well, we don't have enough to do that other road, so let's just cut off here."
One, one thing I would, uh, like to see when we have better cost, when you have better cost information, is an understanding of when the project was originally scoped out and money was requested, and we were thinking to do it with asphalt and how we were originally planning to do it. It's like, we thought we would cover this much, and now that we are, now that we have a way, we know that we're gonna do it and do it this way, we're gonna cover this much, and might be a little, might be a little bit less, might be a lot less.
Plus or minus, um, plus or minus whatever we go to the chipstone.
We'll actually be covering more road because we're not using all asphalt.
Oh, great.
We're using a two-inch base with chipstone.
Chipstone.
Yeah, but I don't know if that's totally accurate, because the chipstone is adding pretty significantly.
Is it?
Twenty grand roughly.
Yeah. Well, I was under that impression, we talked to the contractor.
I was going to say, and that, and that, and that's what I'm asking.
We can work those numbers out.
Yeah, it's like, we just want, because it's like, it's going to, it's going to be a lot easier if we say, yeah, we're doing a little bit differently, but it's like, but we're going to get the same amount of work done.
No problem, we're not hiding anything, we want it straight out there, so we'll give you whatever you need.
Thank you. Yes, Dave?
I, I think you've got all these figures and this and that, maybe, and we want to do as much as we can in-house, but you got to revote that. Maybe you should just bring this whole package back in November and see what we got to do. Because if you, if you go all bids, we're not going to have enough money for what we allocated to do this with people in-house. The bids are going to be higher than what you can do.
No.
That's not necessarily true, there's a lot of times where, where contractors wind up cheaper than doing stuff in-house.
That's why you should go to start the whole process and get the bids and see what you can do.
Can I, can I say something? So when we first went for this money, we found out there was available free cash. The commissioners decided that let's get the sixty thousand required and the twenty thousand. We'll do as much work for the paving as we can, we'll do as much of the water as we can. We know twenty thousand's not enough to do the water, but the state is requiring us to do this water.
Yep.
They don't want the contamination in the lines. And the paving desperately needs to be done on a public safety venue, because people are in there walking around and those roads are bad, so we're going to take the worst ones, we've already picked them, through the committee, what we want to do, and between yardage, square yardage and a lineage of feet, and get a price on that, and then we'll figure out how much we can do with that money. We don't need to go after more money or...
Yeah, just do what, do what...
By then, you're going to have another annual town meeting, and if you have any...
By the time we get this done, we make a motion a little bit...
[laughing]
Second it.
As long as the, slightly know that we need to strengthen this out before we bid out.
Yeah.
And I appreciate some of that news to do.
I mean, I think we start with a public hearing and we review the tape and, and...
Just a point of interest, if I may, it was suggested that we get the bids and then go back for the money. You cannot do it that way, you have to have the money. This is why you had the general vote for the ARCA funding, because you have to have funds certain prior to offering contracts, you can't go out to bid much, you can offer the contract.
Yeah.
The accountant will sign off on it if the funds aren't there.
Yeah.
So you absolutely have to stick within your current budget, which it sounds like you're perfectly prepared to do, just want people to understand the actual legal process.
Yeah, it's, it's just a case of...
Kelly, we can take estimates without funding, can't go out to bid without funding.
Oh, absolutely, can't go out to bid without funding, correct.
So in the meantime, we can look at that, we can have another meeting and talk to Dennis and see, get his ideas on what, what we need for water. Ryan's already on top of it, so I think, I think we're done here.
All right. Great.
And then, and then for reviewing the, reviewing the, the tape of the town meeting, just to get a feel for the, some of the side discussion around the approval of the article. Is that something you're going to do, Kelly, or are you going to send us a link and we'll...
Well, I can do both, I can review it, and then I'll tell you exactly, I'll send you the clip or the section of the meeting that it's in, because I have the meeting broken into four different videos.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'll tell you exactly where to queue it up to start, so you're not listening to forty-five minutes of somebody, you know, discussing something that's completely off topic.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll tell you how long it is, so you know how long you need to block out, you know, do you need to bring tequila, do you need to bring coffee, you don't know, you don't know.
All right, and then maybe we can plan to just consult amongst ourselves at the next meeting, time permitting, and decide what, what we think is the best course of action based on what was actually discussed and promised at town meeting.
Well, thank you for clearing that up.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's Chris.
The town boards had this for the paving committee to be for ninety days, does that mean this, that's now done? Does that mean that was not...
Mike said that it was up to the twenty, it's actually until the twenty twenty-four. I think you're with this for the long ride, Mr. Commissioner. So whenever we get out, even if it's...
They, they owed us a report within ninety days of the formation of the committee, so we, so we've received a report.
Right.
Right, and so now it's, now we, and part of the report was, hey, we're concerned about the fact that there was these other potential constraints...
Right.
On the funding that was voted by the town, and we want to ensure transparency, and it sounds like we have a path forward for, one, validating how, how strong that potential constraint is and whether or not a, a public hearing is, would be sufficient to meet that requirement, so...
Sounds good, that's all I ask.
We've, we've been appointed for a full year.
Yes.
Yeah, Mike looked at it, I said it was still a full year, so...
Yeah. Yeah, but the report was due in ninety days.
And so we received the report.
We received a report.
Thank you for your help.
So everybody's keeping us legal, how cool is that?
Trying.
All right, any more discussion on the cemetery paving committee? All right, then we will...
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, then we'll move on to former campground concerns.
Well, we're not done yet.
No?
No, we don't have, we don't have the other guy here.
No, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't address this. So in your, in your packet, you have an email from Tom Morse and his concerns about the native historic site in town, formerly known as the campground. It's, it's in your, you have to take your paper book off.
I figured, that's okay.
You used to have it in the folder.
Yeah, I'm used to having it in the folder, there we go.
Um, Ryan, while I have you, one of his concerns is that people have, there was a tree that went across the path, no, I've not been there, would it be possible to take the granite that's sitting back there behind the fire department and put it over in front of the path so that ATVs can't go through there? Because that's one of his, he's very disturbed that dirt bikes and ATVs are riding through the area.
Yeah, anything's possible.
Is it? [laughing] Okay, will you do it?
Yeah, yeah, we can do it.
Do we, do we also need, do we also need to just post that no motor vehicles?
I don't know if, if it is posted or was posted, I have no knowledge of this campsite whatsoever.
I've never been back there.
Now, is the campground currently designated as a park?
Yes, it is, and it's on the national register.
Okay, so we can, so we can't, we can't make it no trespassing, but we, or we probably shouldn't, but we should probably designate a no motor vehicle area.
Yes.
And that way, it's like, in addition to deterring them, do we need to put something up safe?
Doesn't he discuss this in his email, didn't he say it was posted at one point?
Uh, he didn't say that it was posted, it just says...
That must have been somebody was, must have been telling you.
Yeah, and I thought at one point, so, and it's been like a dog's age since I've been on the property, but there's an entrance, I think, from, from Pine?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, it, it used to be that the entrance coming in from Pine was posted no vehicles, but it was considered the only safe path to bring like a four, a four-wheel vehicle in for the purposes of like getting equipment there to mow and the like, so, and it actually got cleared by the, like, the, the main, like, actually what used to be the main road in got basically cleared by the, by the archaeology people as being like less likely to be impactful to the site fundamentally. So what used to be the big main road in, they basically said if there was anything there that was disturbed already, it's okay to like take a vehicle in and basically turn around and bring it back out, so like if, if when we're bringing like a mower in or something like that, it was okay.
Do we currently maintain and cut grass down there?
Yeah, we mow it ideally three times a year, but we are going to do it twice this year, that's all we've been, managed to do.
Yeah, so, but, and it was posted basically like, there, there used to be a sign there that said basically no motor vehicles.
Yeah, I, so I think we should...
So is that where he's talking about where they're going in?
No, I think he's talking from the back, he's talking about from the backside, so...
What you should know though is, at one time, there was a log that was placed across that entrance, possibly by the highway department, I don't know.
That's, that's what he's talking about, and there was a log that was moved.
No, well, there was a log, that was there last year or the year before, it disappeared, we don't know where it went, so then it was wide open, and we're like, okay, it's, it's gone. And then this year, a tree fell across, but it's not completely blocked, uh, blocking it off. So that's kind of the scenario, and I don't know who removed the other log, but someone did.
So I'm thinking that we should probably, that the town should post that vehicles are not allowed on the property, and that we should probably take steps to discourage, to make it more difficult for people to violate that.
Can you make the signs? And do you, tell me exactly what you want them to say, and Ryan, do you have the ability to make them?
Yeah, we make all kinds of signs, so we can make whatever we want it to say, and we can put something across, we'll probably have to clean up the tree that's there now, and then block it off.
Put something more formal across, yeah.
I mean, I would say, it's just, I would almost say something, we just want to prohibit motor vehicles, I mean, I think...
No unauthorized vehicles.
No unauthorized.
No unauthorized, that's a great way to put it, and if you've got the granite there, that way people know that the town is going to be bringing in vehicles to mow.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's great.
Unauthorized is good, and my thought is, no, I don't think I'm going to blink at the bicycle being on there, it's the motor, it's a motorbike, it's not anything with a motor. Or do you think there's...
I, I've never witnessed that myself.
What's that?
Yeah, we've never seen that.
Okay.
So...
I think that's a, that does seem, that does seem to be the complaint, and so, it's like, and then, then there's the, then there's the report of some private property being stored on...
But this is on the roller rink, and I don't know what, I don't know how they relate.
So there is an old, that's more like a house that's on the lakeside, it's actually on the cross street.
Yeah, he's saying it was supposed to be brought, taken down?
It was at one time, it was...
So we were going to be taking it down, I think the problem was, was that they found some sort of defect in the taking, and it, and it paused the work for, for taking that building down, so...
Oh, yeah, that's in tax title, that's one of our problem children.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the only way we would have to take it down, we could actually, even while it's in tax title, reapply to the, was it the attorney general that we were taking down abandoned buildings with? We could potentially get it, get funded to take it down even though we don't own the premises yet. Might be an option.
Mm-hmm.
But I think his concern is the fact that somebody's parking on that property, again, motor vehicles that are unauthorized, but if it's not our property yet, that's one of the things we'd have to look into, because we can't enforce not parking on something that's not ours.
So we'll have to go down there and find out if there are vehicles being parked on the property, and if so, are they on the town's park or are they on the private property that is in tax title?
Are they side by side? I thought they were across the street from each other.
That's not going to be an obvious thing, just because I've been down there, there's actually like a really weird property line there, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, if it's obvious, that, that would be nice.
We could, we could ask, we could ask Al to look, because he's better at property lines than probably anybody else. So could we, just...
Yeah, and I'll check, I'll check with Amy about where we are in tax title for that.
Have we got the grounds there?
Yeah.
We do.
Twice, twice a year this year?
Twice a year, sometimes three times. But it's a town-owned property, and it's been designated as a park.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a vested interest in mowing it.
Yeah, reading this, I get that it could very well be that the, that the vehicles are being parked on the, on the roller rink property.
That's what the email implied, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and if that's the case, I think we don't, I don't think we have standing to take any action yet.
Okay.
Amy's working on it. All right, so I don't think we need to vote anything final to the sign.
So where is the granite going to go, and is it going to hinder you from going in and out to mow?
Does it need to be granite?
No, it doesn't, but I thought it would kill two birds with one stone, because the granite, the, the fire department would really like the granite moved out of there, so the rest of the lawn be mowed back there. And it would put something that people are less likely to try and drag out of the way.
Oh, yeah, no, I know that.
So, but if that's access for the town vehicles, that changes that completely.
No, there's a gate on the other, there's two en, there's two access points. That one, we don't need to use really, that could be just for walking, the other one is a gate.
That we can get through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured this would solve everybody's problems, we move that over there, it's out of there, and then that's got something that nobody's going to drag out of there.
As I say, yeah, if you want to use something else, I would say use your judgment, but the fire department would appreciate the granite going away, it sounds like.
Okay.
Why don't you put a gate up on the other entrance, certain log or something?
Well, cost...
That's still ready to work.
Uh, it would...
Do you, do you, do you use that as for emergency uses, when the fire lane gets blocked off?
If there's a fire.
Yeah. Then use that.
What, if there's a fire, they...
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the, so is that, are we...
Yeah, that's, that's...
That is...
Good jump, I brought that up, I wasn't aware of that either.
Yeah, a gate or like a, you know, like a cable with a, with a lock that they have act, that they have the, um, connect key or, or, or a combination.
Mm-hmm.
Ooh, cables, that's scary.
Yeah, I don't think...
Are they?
Well, yeah, if you're on a motorcycle, you might not see it, you might decapitate somebody, and I have a friend who actually died that way.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Good point.
So, maybe...
Gate.
So then they can get clobbered and just get...
Well, you know, they don't see the heat, and they're not, they're in the right home.
Can I check with Peter and see how, how much he needs access there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Run that by him, this, it'd be real easy, just to put like four stones there, big boulders, and it'll look natural and easy, but...
I would say, I would say that if Peter is comfortable with putting that there and putting the stones there so that vehicles can't get through, and it's a permanent, more permanent solution, then I'm good with it, I mean, if he doesn't have a concern.
Yeah, and if not, then we need to take a look at maybe the, similar to the gate Yeah, and if not, then we need to take a look at maybe the similar to the gate that Autobahn put on that damn road up to the, to the pond. That doesn't exist anymore.
Okay. And then, do we need to, if, if Peter says he does want a gate, do we need to authorize that? Or is that something Ryan can just do based on what?
Well, you can authorize it now based on what he talks about with Peter.
Yeah.
All right, I'll take a motion to that effect.
I make a motion that we authorize Ryan to pursue the best means to restrict motor traffic on the property known as the campground. And that he have, with consult from the fire department for the appropriate means to restrict that traffic.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Your first motion of the evening, folks.
I think that does well, all right.
And what do we do?
Out of respect to Ryan, we've got two other things that touch on him on the agenda. So I would like a motion to, to take items eight and thirteen on the agenda next.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item eight, highway cell phone reimbursement. Brad, this was your concern?
Uh, so it was brought to my attention that Ryan is operating a second, or operating a business on the side. And the question was, was the select board aware that Ryan is also operating a business? It was questioned whether he was doing it within business hours or not. And I brought it up to Kelly. She said, how do I know it's Ryan? What do you have for evidence? I looked at the website, I looked at Facebook. The one thing that we picked up was that the cell phone that was attached to it was Ryan's cell phone, which was the only way we figured out this was actually Ryan's business. And it was determined by the town accountant that we can't be reimbursing someone's cell phone info if.
If they're using it for private purposes.
Correct.
Well, that's kind of weird.
Not Mr. Holcraft.
No, because it's a business.
Oh, because it's.
Not Mr. Holcraft.
It's a private business.
It's a private business, got it.
Yeah, we can't fund somebody else's business expense. Is basically what she's saying. So she's not going to approve payments for reimbursing the phone.
So, but if we were, if it were used just for personal purposes and for work purposes, that would be okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
Well, and.
So we partially, we partially reimburse people for people, for people who use their cell phones in a dual purpose.
Mm-hmm.
We pay, okay, you get this much, I don't know what it is, for people to use their personal phone for a town business.
Okay.
But then we don't pay the whole bill.
Okay.
We reimburse the whole cell phone bill in this particular instance.
Okay.
And because we reimburse the whole cell phone bill, it is considered by the government that the phone actually belongs to the town. So we can't allow the phone to be used for the business if we reimburse it in full, which is why she's not going to reimburse it.
So can we reimburse it the same rate that we are other people partially for the cell phone?
I don't think so, because it's not a personal phone. I think it's because it's being used for business. It's the business thing that throws it off.
Is, is the, is, go ahead, Ryan.
This was part of my employment agreement. And I'm, and I'm just putting this out there.
Don't, don't bang it on the microphone.
Sorry. This was a deal that was made with me from the start.
Right, but it was, there was supposed to be a personal cell phone. And I think at the time, we may not have been aware of the fact that there was a business being run off of it.
I already went up.
Okay, so that, so.
What's the date of, what's the date of that document?
May 6th, 2019.
Yeah, and, and I remember that, because that was part of actually the negotiation. I was going to say, that was part of the negotiation of his contract, was the fact that we were going to reimburse his personal cell phone?
But the contract is void after three years.
Right.
So, yes, it's a promise.
I don't have a contract, though.
Yeah, well, it was a hiring, it was like a.
I think, because I'm hourly.
Yeah, so you can still have a contract and be hourly. But, but the point is that you made a promise, right?
Well, we, we made a promise, but I think, and Ryan just made the same statement. At the time, we weren't necessarily aware that it was a business use phone.
It may not have been at the time.
I didn't know that was an issue anyway, because I mean, I use it, it's, it's a personal, I own the phone. I buy my own phone, pay the reimbursement for the bill. I wasn't trying to get away with anything.
They let the town buy a phone for him then?
I think we, we offered that at the time.
Yeah, and I, and I.
So, so why don't we just instead, because you, you guys made an agreement, we'll pay him. Just because it's three years down the road, you don't typically take benefits away from someone because he no longer has the contract. Why don't we just call it something different, a stipend?
Because it's not. He submits a bill for reimbursement. And as long as he's.
No, I see, I see where he's getting at.
But, but let's call it, let's put a new line item on his expense account for a stipend for the time it takes him to take calls after hours. Because you take them after hours, right? Weekends night?
Yeah, twenty-four hours.
So, right, I call you after hours, right? So why don't we just call it a stipend and don't call it a cell phone reimbursement? Just give them whatever that fee is on an annual basis. And just don't take anything away, but don't break the law. Or it's probably more an ethical thing, right? Because you can't take more than, what, thirty, forty dollars from someone as a town owner? Or was it, what's the, what is it, forty-nine dollars or something?
It's forty-nine, but.
Yeah, so, but, but the point is, don't take it away from them, but just call it something different and.
That would have to wait till a town meeting, but it's definitely something that might be an option.
I think I have a solution.
Just buy a phone for him, that's all.
I think I have a solution. You just download, download an app, it's your second line. I have two lines on my phone. One comes in from Skype, and one comes in on another line. And I pay Skype five bucks once to that second line. So when I, when I pick up the phone, I can say, oh, this is, you know, one of Patrick's calling me. Oh, no, no, it's the daughter's calling me, you know? Before I even use the phone.
Well, Jacob, if I could actually, I, no, I do. And maybe Jacob could chime in. I mean, with the VOIP, is there anything that we have through bundled services? Like through Teams where we can assign a phone number?
Yeah, yeah, we could do, we do a phone, like a line for him through Teams. If he has the app on his phone.
So he would take his town calls through the app and then.
Right.
It still comes to the same phone?
Yeah.
You'll see that it comes from.
It would, it, but it would, it would give you two separate numbers. You'd have a town number and you would have another.
And if you go on vacation, we can set up.
What's that?
You're not, you're not, I think this, I think this is still a bill for his business phone, regardless of whether he has an app or not.
Yeah, Ryan, question. Is the agreement that we will pay for your cell phone service? Okay, so, so the device, so you're responsible to provide your own device?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the town has no interest in his physical device. We haven't, we are paying for his service.
You're going to have to take this up with Lori. Because she's not going to pay that bill again, unless you find a legal reason to do it. And all these semantics and pretending it's not what it is, is not going to fly with her.
But the.
Which is, the which is idea is the most viable at this point, because it creates the same monetary benefit that he's getting now.
But it's.
But it's legal.
And it's transparent.
And it's transparent.
Yeah, and basically make it be like a telecommunications stipend or.
Right, or something like that, you know?
And you put hours in for your time when you take time to take someone's call? And I think the town's getting a great deal of that.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, nobody wants to take it away from him. We just want to make it legal.
I get it, I get it.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we make it a stipend and not a committed reimbursement, then when the cell phone company tweaks its fees from this, the, we need more of your money fee goes from $1.23 to $1.29?
What's the annual?
I'm not going to worry about that.
What's, what's the?
That's, that's.
Cool, we're not, yeah.
What's the annual cost?
Twelve hundred bucks.
Twelve hundred bucks for the year? Would you exceed that in overtime if you put in overtime fee calls?
I would say possibly.
Sounds like it, right?
Who's your carrier that you're paying twelve hundred bucks a year?
That's a hundred a month.
Hundred bucks a month?
Man, you don't have any friends or family.
I got three lines for that.
And I know I'm a line. Cheaper, but Verizon has the best cell phone service right here where I work, honestly.
That's, I don't, I don't have.
This is where I need it, so.
I don't have the best.
It's two fifty, I think a hundred is a deal.
So what do you have, Verizon?
And it's the best around.
Really, fifty dollars a month.
So.
Fifty dollars a month, unlimited data, unlimited texting, unlimited phone calls.
That's.
So would we want to structure this as a, he would be eligible for the partial subsidy that everyone in town who uses their phone, and then we top it up?
You have got to take it up with Lori.
Take it up with Lori.
It's a business phone.
Well, but I guess the question is.
So, well, I think, I think, I think we have to be careful. So I, I think we do have to be careful, though.
Put your wife's cell phone on your business page. Problem solved.
She can't get all the calls. She won't know how to answer them.
Oh, sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, go ahead.
But you could also use a second, you could have like a second line for the business, and then it wouldn't be on there, and then you'd use your main line for the.
A second phone number?
Right, have a second phone number for the business side. But it would still bring the phone, because you own the phone.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, but so your number, which is what they pay for, would be just for town stuff.
Yeah. And personal stuff.
I'm open to however you want to do it.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll have to explore our options on this one.
Just put it on hold for now.
Why don't, why don't, why don't we do this? Did you want to talk to Lori about the, the excruciating detail about this? And then Ryan, would you be willing?
I love excruciating detail.
Would you, well, that's, that's why I volunteered you for it, even though you're the guy in charge. And then Ryan, would you mind exploring with some of the smart folks in the room? Some of the options you have for disconnecting your business from your current phone? Because that would get rid of the, the problem. Or disconnecting your business from your town num, reimbursed number. Let's.
Yeah, separating your business from the, from the, from the service that we're paying for. Or.
This is not great.
Sufficiently separating it. To meet legal muster.
I really.
What if I just get paid, what if I just get compensated?
But that makes a claim that is never a question about.
Yeah, but that's great for next fiscal.
But we can't, yeah, but, well, the reason why I'm saying we need to take a look at it. Yeah, we could do.
Yeah, negotiate your wage for calling the towns more.
Yeah, just compensate me differently, and I just pay the cell phone.
Yeah, but that's all pension benefitable and all that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so.
All right.
Or, or we could just get him a, a town phone on a cheaper service and publicize that number. And you can tell people to call you back on the, the other number, and you can be a sad dual phone person like me.
That's what I was trying to not be, but.
Well, I have multiple numbers and they're all in eSIMs on my, so I only have one phone.
Right.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
With each SIM. Uh, yeah, Dave, go ahead.
Dr. Brad before the meeting, I heard, I heard him say that when we discussed the cell phone, that I could speak at the time. He, went to him and said that old crap was complaining, that I complained about his phone.
Um, whoa, 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 stop, 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 stop.
Go ahead.
How is, wait, 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 wait. How is this relevant to the discussion of reimbursing Ryan for his cell phone? Are we, are, are you complaining about people talking about you when you're not around?
No, I'm talking about a selectman saying things to him which were not true. And he came to me and accused me of saying things that I didn't say because of one of your selectmen.
Well, my selectman?
So that has something to do, that has something to do with the cell phone.
He, no, it does not have anything to do with the cell phone. It has to do with your, it has to do with your conversation with the selectman. I suggest you take this matter up with the selectman in question. He is not, or she, I don't know who you're, I suspect I know who you talked to.
Yeah, when I spoke to him.
Uh, you know what? That's fine.
Yeah.
The select, the select board member that you talked to is not mine. We are all serving here at the town's pleasure. And if you have a problem with what they said, that is not for me to adjudicate. That is for you to talk to them about. Because this happened outside the meeting. This happened outside of open meeting. I have no bearing on what people say outside of open meeting.
Down in Brookfield, it happened to a selectman.
I just gave you the reason to, how I found out about this and how I found out about the phone number.
This is done.
Okay.
This is done, we're moving on. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not entertaining a wine on, I am not entertaining a wine on open meeting.
You're going to contain it when you, when you return.
I, fine, you can, you can complain to me outside open meeting all you want.
No, I'm not going to complain to you, I'm going to talk to Brad.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I have no use to talk to you about this.
I have to do a clarification on one thing. If he gets his own service, telephone service for his business line, doesn't matter if he has plans, right? It's his phone.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. So I have this solution for you, Ryan, go and talk after me.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
I think that's what Brad was suggesting.
So, yeah, so this, this.
Yeah, that is what Brad was suggesting.
All right, excellent. The other item agenda, the last one I think we need you for, Ryan, is number thirteen, encroachment on town right-of-way. And so we, this came up last time, I don't think you were here, but.
Yeah.
This was something that I was, I was researching something completely different and just happened to stumble across this state law. So, hold on a second here. I'm trying to write forward.
Davy, you know what you own it?
I've got so many folders. When, when we were discussing the issue on, was it Henry something Road? With the, the retaining wall?
Henry Allen.
It was thought at the time that because it had been there for so long that it's grandfathered. Well, it's not. And if anything is in the town right-of-way, under general law, chapter, I believe, is eighty-six, section three, we have, if it's not there prior to May 26, 1917, at any point, the select board has the authority to order encroachments into the right-of-way to be removed. So I felt it was important that you knew that going forward. So if a similar issue comes up, you may, you may choose differently, or you may, Ryan may have an issue where he needs something removed, and it's not grandfathered. It, it can be removed. And if, under section four, if any building, fence, or other encumbrance is adjudged as a nuisance and ordered to be abated, the materials may be sold at auction. The proceeds apply to the payment of the express prosecution and removal of, and if insufficient, the court may order the remainder to be levied upon the property of the defendant. So not only can you order them to remove it, they have to pay for it to be removed. Not that you would ever use this, but it's good to have in that one.
Yes, it is, that is good to know. On a related note, if there were, if someone had their property in the town right-of-way and someone, someone on town business were to bump into it by accident and damage it, would that, does this law also absolve us of any responsibility since their property is in the right-of-way?
Yes, it does. Because it shouldn't be in the right-of-way. It's an encumbrance, it is encroaching on the public way.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, but I wanted to confirm that.
Yeah. You're not responsible to replace something that shouldn't be there.
Hmm, okay. So I think that's, so Ryan, so in, in the future, if there is a complaint and it turns out to be in the right-of-way, it's like, I think we have the answer. And they can.
But, but please don't take that as a license. It'll take out every mailbox in town.
So, yes, please be respectful.
No, this is very specific to fences and structures of the road.
Sorry.
I think mailboxes.
What's that?
A mailbox is allowed to be on the edge of the road.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that falls under this.
No, it does, this does.
It's not an obstacle or a wall, so.
Talking about fences and retaining walls.
So you and I had a conversation also on town policies in regards to this. And I know you were questioning about having additional town policies done in this regard. So if you want to bring that up.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's other towns using more current policies with.
So this is state law. You want to, if you want to create a policy that adds a little more teeth to this or gives us a process, that's a really great idea, because it gives, like, for continuity, continuity purposes for boards coming forward, highway superintendents coming forward, because right, nobody lives forever, so we're all going to be out of here at some point. They will have a map, they'll have a roadmap of how and what is supposed to be done. And when you use it, then you'll have set precedent on how and what is supposed to be done.
Yeah, I would like to look at that for the future.
Consider your policy a CMR to the Massachusetts general law.
Right.
All right, anything else on this issue?
Do you want to write the policy, Ryan? Or get sample?
To be honest with you, I'm going to look at the, the policy that the other towns have in place and just slightly modify it for us.
Yeah.
But, but I'll bring that to the board before.
Yeah, do it and shoot it over, and I'll, I'll check it for legality, and then the board can review it and.
Okay.
Approve it, or.
Okay.
It'll probably be fine if it's already in somebody else's town, so.
Oh, probably.
Not necessarily, but it's, it's possible. It's happened before.
All right, Ryan, I don't see anything else on the agenda that might need you, so.
Right.
It's like, and if we need you, we'll call you.
I'm going to, I'm going to stay a few minutes.
Sure. All right, let's see. So that brings us back to the agenda in order number six, changes in vote tabulators, changes in vote tabulators, cast precinct optical voting tabulator. Mike has not returned yet. He must have run for good.
Well, let's just move on to the next one.
No, we don't. We don't actually make any of this. The town voted to give Mike permission to get an upgraded tabulator. In order for that to happen, the board needs to vote to remove the other, to discontinue the other one. This was mistitled.
Okay.
So we're actually discontinuing the AccuVote Optical Scan Tabulator and replacing it with the Image Cast Precinct Optical Tabulator. And it's in your package, so you can read the motion.
Brad, do you want to read the motion?
Motion to vote the use of the Image Cast Precinct Tabulator at the primary for state senate.
Where is it?
It's on the bottom of the actual form. It's the second paragraph.
Oh, I think it's the second paragraph.
Yeah, it's... But you just need to read the rest of it and make that your motion.
Okay, so I make a motion per MGL, chapter fifty-four, section thirty-four. We hereby vote the use of the Image Cast Precinct Tabulator at the primary for state senate on October tenth, twenty twenty-three, and thereafter at all primaries and elections held in the town of Brookfield until otherwise ordered by vote of the Select Board of Brookfield.
Second.
Little more.
Further, the town will discontinue the use of the AccuVote Optical Scanner in all elections held in the town of Brookfield.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And this is a signature, all of us. Down to Kelly when it's done, please. All right, item number seven, discharge of lien. Another signature item.
Thank you. This is another of the community...
CDBG. Community Development Block Grants that fund the...
Yes, and this is FY eighteen block grant.
Are we effectively... The loan's been paid back and so we don't need the lien on the property anymore?
That is correct. The loan has been paid off.
All right, yes.
Can I ask the address of that?
Yes, the address is Four Hyde Street. Ms. Doris Spinton is the name.
What are you going with that?
As I understand it, as part of the town resident getting a loan, the town guarantees the loan and takes out a lien against the property as security against them having to pay... Against us having to pay back the loan. The loan that we guaranteed has been paid off, so the town has no interest or need in a lien on the property anymore. So the Select Board is being... Is considering releasing that lien since it seems we don't need it anymore. I don't... It's like, if they want to sell the house, the lien just slows things down and we have no need for it, so why hassle them? Is my attitude.
I don't think we have a legal right to keep it in place either once it's paid.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, I don't think we have a legal right to keep it in place once it's paid.
Paid off.
Yeah, it's paid off. You can't decide. You can't vote to say, nope, we're not going to release your lien. You have to...
We have to do it. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we discharge the lien on Four Hyde Street.
Second.
How'd that come about anyway?
Their attorney sent us a letter. Nope, so she could have been refinancing and they wouldn't subordinate. And so when you refinance, you're required to pay it off. She could be selling. She could be transferring it into a trust. For her case, there are a lot of different reasons why.
Could it have reached the full term of the law?
No, because once you reach the full term of the loan, it's forgiven. Because it gets forgiven over time based on this program. This money doesn't come from the town. It comes from a grant.
I mean, value.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's not a loan. It's more of a... Is that a grant that's earned off?
Yeah, yeah, so the longer you own the house, the less you owe on a particular...
The idea being, you don't take the grant, improve the house, and then flip it on the improvement.
Correct.
It's... You have to... The grant is for you to enjoy the benefit and when you enjoy the benefit long enough, the grant is forgiven.
If you lived it ten years, I think you paid... You only pay off half of the benefit yourself. If you lived it fifteen years and it's paid in full, then it's...
Yeah, it depends. I've seen him at twenty.
Yeah.
You gotta be in the house for twenty.
Yeah, they all have their own schedule, but it seems like the... It seems like the need for the lien has expired. They have earned off their grant.
So if you would sign that on behalf of the board...
Did we vote on it?
If you vote... Well, I know Beth...
I made a motion.
Brad?
Second.
All right, all in favor of releasing the lien for Four Hyde Street, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Sign the original document. I will notarize it.
All right, that's... Okay. Are you here? You'll fill out the date, so...
Can you channel your inner me for the rest of the agenda?
I will try. I'm trying my best.
Just sign it. I'll fill in the rest.
All right, you did the rest.
I am a notary.
Pass it down.
So I'll fill in the rest of it, so...
All right, Don Hebert, longevity payment. Brad, I think that was your request?
Yeah, so I had talked to Don and he had mentioned how he's been here thirty-four years and that he would be retiring. And the question was about his longevity pay, if he would receive it. And I wasn't sure and went to Kelly. And I guess that's more of a decision of the Select Board to whether we want to...
No, it's not. No, he was voted to have his longevity. He's entitled to his longevity. The only issue is, the way it's written, the way the longevity is written, it's at the end of the year, so he's going to get it in full. He's been here way more enough years to get the whole vote, right? That wasn't a good sentence. Anyway...
He's maxed it out.
But everybody gets paid at the end of the fiscal year, so he'll get whatever he's getting when he separates. And then in July, he'll get a check for his longevity.
I don't see a problem with that.
It shouldn't be prorated. He should get the whole thing.
So there's nothing to vote... Or do we have to vote on paying the full...
No, you don't. He's entitled to the whole thing.
No, she's informing him.
They need clarification.
He has to... He just has to wait for the time when everyone gets their longevity payment.
You might... I'm not sure. I would have to really look at the language very closely. You might have the ability to vote to give it to him at separation.
So I think the real question was when, if he retires... If he retired during that year...
Does he get it?
Are you eligible for a longevity when they come into the year? Is it...
He is absolutely entitled to it because he far exceeds the maximum amount to get the longevity. So he's absolutely entitled to the entire thing.
So do people... So do employees vest in the longevity on the first day of the year, but we don't pay it till the last day of the year?
I think they vest on their anniversary date of employment.
And when is his...
But they're paid on the last day of the year.
But they're paid on the last day.
When is his anniversary date?
Thirty-three years ago, which the maximum is twenty, so it doesn't matter.
No, no, but to me, anniversary date means, like, if I start work on September first, my anniversary date is September first.
Right.
But I think what she's saying is he's already so far exceeded past the twenty years, it doesn't really matter.
Well, but he's exceeded... He is... Yeah, I stipulate...
Divested accessibility thirteen years ago.
Yeah, no, I stipulate that he has enough time for this. The question is, on what day of the fiscal year does it vest?
So why didn't he get it in July first?
Because it wasn't voted and it's paid... It wasn't... It was voted for FY twenty-four to be paid at the end of the year, which is the fiscal year. So he'll get... Everybody will get their longevity. Well, not everybody, because they didn't put enough money to pay everybody. They did the math wrong at the meeting, so there's not enough money to pay everybody.
So that's also going to be at a special town meeting?
So...
Or those who got the math wrong?
Nothing.
Well, it was the extra people that gave the actual number that the town voted and it wasn't enough. They should have put what they wanted plus what the town had already calculated for other employees. And they didn't do that. So we're short.
How much?
About thirteen thousand.
Really?
How much are we short?
You know.
Thirteen thousand, you said?
Yeah, I don't want to give you the number because I might be misremembering, but we have it in a spreadsheet.
That's a... Okay, that's a... There's a comma in there, so it catches my attention.
Yes.
Okay, that's really...
There's a comma in it, for sure.
All right.
So, Ryan, while you're here, if you want to let Don know.
Yeah, absolutely entitled to the...
All right, number ten, correct the personnel appointment terms.
So, I was perusing the bylaws and realized that when you appointed everybody in your list of blanket appointments, the appointment... The dates were wrong. They're supposed to be three-year staggered terms, not annually. We've been appointing people annually just kind of on autopilot.
For which committees, all of them?
Pretty much. Some of them are annually, but some of them are not. Some of them are three-year, but they're not staggered anymore because people came off and went on and you've got, you know, there are two people all leaving on the same year. So this particular committee, you have... You had five members on the committee. You have three now. Amy did not want to be reappointed. She has a serious issue and she asked me to discuss this with you. You reappointed the chairman of this committee who stood up at town meeting and completely went around the personnel board to get that raise, which violated the town bylaws. And she's the chairman of the committee and she doesn't want to serve in a committee with somebody who would...
Do that.
Do that. So she's asked not to be put back on the committee. And I honestly do not have time to do this anymore. So you have three members. If you choose to reappoint all three of them, they need to be staggered.
So are the original reappointments void or are the original reappointments... We need to adjust the reappointments? We need to re-reappoint them to staggered terms?
You need to...
We have a couple of questions.
If you choose to reappoint all three people, you need to re-reappoint them. You need to adjust their terms to staggered terms.
But I guess my question is, did we... Have they been reappointed or are those... Is that...
They have. You reappointed them in June for the fiscal year.
So we're adjusting their appointment? To me...
Well, there's two problems. And one of them is implied and one of them is explicit. The explicit one is that when we did the reappointment to the Personnel Committee, it sounds like we did one-year appointments. We did everybody without a real consideration as to the actions and conducts of the people who were appointed. Because of that, in part because of that, we now have some requests not to get reappointed. So, one, in order to have stability on the committee, if we're going to keep three people who are still currently willing to serve, we need to put different service dates on the appointment. We also may want to just reconsider, and I think what we would have to do is make a motion to...
Rescind the appointment.
Rescind the appointment, right? And determine if we then have a more functional committee with people who are dedicated to honoring the intent of the committee. So who are the people... Who in total did we reappoint originally?
You originally reappointed Holly Chisholm, Douglas Ford, and Linda Lincoln.
Okay.
And the treasurer had asked not to be reappointed.
Okay.
And I had asked not to be reappointed because, like I said, I don't...
Right. So I guess the question that I would have, right, is do we know for certain that Amy would accept the appointment if we did not reappoint Linda?
I do not. I do not know that. But we do have another person who is interested pending the outcome of this discussion, who I shall not name, pending the outcome of this discussion.
Gotcha.
At their request.
That's fair. Okay, so not it as well. So if we only vote two people on, we don't technically have a functional Personnel Committee.
We absolutely do because of the new bylaw.
Ooh, that's correct. Is any amount is a quorum, even if it's only two.
Yep, they'll have to both meet all the time, but that committee needs to get all...
So I am perfectly fine with rescinding our vote. Do you know what the date was of our vote?
It should be...
June twenty-ninth, probably, if it was the June meeting.
Yeah, it was that last one.
Yeah, so I make a motion... So I'll go ahead and make that motion even though I'm sure I'll get a telephone call at some point in my life. But I'll make a motion to rescind the original Personnel Committee appointment votes of June twenty twenty-three for the Personnel Committee.
Rescind all... Are you...
I'm going to start by just rescinding them all.
Okay, no, and I don't have a problem with that. I want to make sure I understood what you were motioning.
Yes, I am motioning that we rescind all of our votes from June relative to the Personnel Committee. All of our appointments from June. That's my motion.
Okay.
And how do we reappoint?
Literally make another motion to appoint the folks that I care to...
Do we have a second for the motion?
Okay, second.
All right, so what is the... Just thinking ahead... I'm thinking ahead. We can rescind it and then we can appoint. And if we appoint two people, we have a functioning committee.
Because two people's a committee if that's all we got.
It's like two people, if they both meet, can make a quorum and can make a functioning committee.
They can, even though they might get a hung jury on some items. They are technically a committee of two.
Yes. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Rich?
I have a problem with this, and I'll tell you why. We changed the bylaw on how vacations are allotted to people that have been here a certain amount of time. And that was specifically done for Amy, right?
No.
No, that had nothing to do...
It had nothing to do with Amy. It affected multiple employees.
That had nothing to do...
Why did we... Amy started...
Well, she took the benefit.
No, she... No, the change was effective in fiscal year twenty-four. Amy started at the beginning, at the very beginning of fiscal year twenty-three, right?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, so she had... So she had almost two years of experience.
It was because of the experience that she had coming in as a new employee that she recommended that change happen, but it did not positively impact her during the time period. It was a learning from bringing in people that it was just ridiculous that that's the way that we treated them on the way in the door. So, no.
So this just seems retaliatory to Linda, what you guys are doing. Like, that's how I see it. Anyone has a right to make a motion on the town hall floor to do what she did. And I think it's retaliatory.
She does. Well, the way I see it, Linda's chair of the Personnel Committee. And as chair of the Personnel Committee, and since she's in that role, if she wanted those changes, she... My thought is, her first thing should have been to try and make that happen through the Personnel Committee. She completely bypassed the committee that she's a chair of and she did things that are within her right. But it is our response... But what... It's like, if the chair of the Personnel Committee is bypassing their committee and going to town floor to get raises, how does that make the Personnel Committee look? It makes it look like it's useless.
It's just like...
She has not served the Town and the Personnel Committee well by what she did.
So if what you're saying, she did, like, but now it looks retaliatory, what you guys are doing. That's how I see it.
So...
She serves at the pleasure of the Select Board.
And to a certain extent, but we are... You can say retaliatory, but it's like, but to me, it's like, she's done something. It's like, we appoint her. She's done something that we don't like. The Personnel Board's not an independent board. It's a... To my mind, it's a... I would say she... I would say that in this case, the behavior was sufficiently egregious to warrant a reaction. I mean, if someone on a committee votes a way I don't like and I say, I'm going to kick you off the committee if you don't vote this way, then that's coercion and then if they vote their conscience and I kick them off, that to me is much more of a rank retaliation. To me, this is more of a, we think that she... I'm sorry, not we. I think, in my opinion, this behavior warrants consideration to saying, is she inappropriate? Is her serving on the Personnel Board appropriate given her behavior at town meeting and basically shortening the Personnel Board? I understand that it is a response to her behavior and is a negative response. And I can understand why some people might consider it retaliation. It's a... But I see it on the other side of the line. I understand your point, Rich. I can see why you might think that way.
I didn't necessarily, like, I didn't vote deliberately for the raise, right? But I'm not holding Linda against it and I don't hold it against anyone...
But deliberating, they wait...
Excuse me, Linda.
I'm sorry.
I don't hold it against anyone how they vote at an annual town meeting. And I feel like that's what's happening right now.
But to me, it's not her vote. It's that she made the motion, that she brought it up.
Anyone can make the motion at a county meeting.
Anyone can.
And that's her personal. She was not acting as board when she did it. But that was Linda Lincoln that did it, not... She didn't say, I'm the chairman of the board. On the board, Linda Lincoln personally did it. And I think it looks retaliatory.
So everybody else has gone through the Personnel Board to do this. And even if they said no, then they can go make their plea at the town meeting. But they went to the Personnel Board first. This is somebody who is supposed to know these rules. This is an actual bylaw that was violated. So if they don't discuss this, and whatever the decision is, the decision is, but if they don't discuss this, is she getting favoritism because she's on the committee? It can be seen from either way.
There are several questions.
Is the Personnel bylaw, to me, if she was on the advisory board and did it, then it would be a different thing, not the Personnel bylaw.
But the Personnel bylaw says you have to go to the Personnel Committee to do this, to get their approval.
And as chair, she could have done it. She controls the agenda.
She could have actually called the meeting specifically to bring it through in an appropriate manner.
You say appropriate, but I don't think an annual town meeting is an inappropriate manner. If it was at a...
So our town bylaws state that it should have gone through the Personnel Board prior to it getting brought to town meeting that way. And if there's anyone that ought to be cognizant of our bylaws, I would think that the person who used to be the custodian of the bylaws would have the least excuse, who's also the chair of the committee that that bylaw pertains to, to choose to kind of fundamentally go rogue, right?
I do get what you're saying, but I just, the way that it's going, it just seems retaliatory to me, sitting here at like, I don't have any stake in any part of the game. I'm telling you what it looks like.
So...
But you have the right to do it.
Yeah, and that's the thing, is that fundamentally, we have to take a look at the whole impression and it may appear retaliatory to you failure to take... failure to take any action to others makes it look like favoritism and not holding people, holding people accountable, right? It's not even just other town employees, right?
Well, not his residents.
I mean, I mean, I got, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be frank, I, I, I wasn't paying enough attention and rubber stamped when we went ahead and did everybody's appointments, and probably should have spoke up then, so I'll take the hit for just like, jeez, this is part of like what we do every year, let's go ahead, and everybody that wants to serve, because it's so hard to get people to serve, you do it, right?
If it would have been a better, if it had a better appeal.
And, and, and I'll, I'll totally tell you what, I'll take the hit for rubber stamping every appointment that we had in front of us that night, I think there was only one committee that we didn't vote on because there, we knew that there were some concerns about, about what was going on.
I spoke to Kelly about that recently, something about appointments that just get rubber stamped, because there's a guy that's been on different boards here that's totally incompetent, and he gets rubber stamped at times, and like, you need to look at someone's cognitive ability to be on a board as well.
He's not wrong, it would not be a bad idea for you to go through that entire list.
Yeah.
And really look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and, and part of that is that it's, we've only got so many people willing to serve, and so it's, and so sometimes it's hard, it's sometimes hard to say, yeah, I know, it's like, we're gonna have to leave, we'd have to leave the chair open if we didn't reappoint a person due to a, a concern similar to what you had, and, and part of it is, it's like, I, I don't know about the rest of the board, I don't know all the people that serve on boards, I don't know, it's like, after meeting them, I might say, yeah, that's, I have some concerns, or I may say, I don't, I don't see the concern. It's, and so it's.
Well, I mean, you can put in an hour a week, or you could put in fifty hours a week, so I, to that point, right, so I, I get.
I feel like I put in fifty hours getting ready for today's meeting. All right, thank, thank you, Rich. All right, so, so we have a motion to rescind all the Personnel Board appointments, and it's been seconded. Let's see, and so, and we can reappoint anyone we want, but hopefully the people we appoint want to be appointed.
Correct.
All right.
Well, well, right now, we only have two people to reappoint, we would have Holly and Doug.
And Doug.
Doug. Mm-hmm. I mean, okay.
So.
And that, and that, and a board.
And you know, not to like throw a chink in this, but this is being brought to your attention only because I realized that the, the terms were wrong, and that when I asked why you weren't reappointed, this is what was brought up. So, if I had been, you know, I, it didn't even dawn on me that she was on the planning, the Personnel Board.
No, I, I.
It, it, it went right over my head at the moment.
Yeah, and, and honestly, at the town meeting, I, after town meeting, I had about ten people march by me and, and, and give me a WTF over the.
I got way more complaints about it than anyone ever had any commendation about it.
Yeah. Relative, and, and the specific complaint I got was relative to, you're on the Personnel Board, why didn't you handle it there?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, and, and if it went to the Personnel Board, and the Personnel Board said, well, we just don't agree with you, then by all means, you went through all the steps, bring it up at town meeting and do it there.
Right.
If that's what you want to do.
Yeah. We have failed at the channeling your inner bath for the rest of the meeting, if that's okay.
Just, I.
Imagine what happens if I didn't channel your inner bath.
And I think that it would, I do not think that Amy won't be willing to go back on to it.
And that's fine, and, and we're not doing it to put her back on, it's, it's, it's that, it's similar to what we went through with the Conservation Committee, right? Is it, is it, is, is that we had the entire committee resign by virtue of saying, we're not comfortable with how it's being managed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I think there's times when you really have to listen to the, to the people that are serving and say, hey, I'm not willing to re-accept appointment, and one of the reasons is, is that this is the activity that I observe members of the board do, okay? So, as hard as it is to get people to serve the town, I, I think we also have to listen when they say that they have concerns about how the, the, their peers are, are conducting themselves, right? So.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the process wasn't followed, so that's all I gotta say about that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right. All in favor of rescinding all of the appointments to the Personnel Board, please say aye.
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 And now do we?
And now, well, now we have a completely vacant Personnel Board, and we need to do something about it.
So, I'd like to make.
So, what is the, I mean, it seems like people just say, hey, I want to be on the committee, and we appoint them, I mean, is there any resume that people are provided to, or, you know, statement of what?
I don't think you have the right to be that fussy.
We're not in a position to be that fussy.
Yeah, well, that's what I meant, I don't mean right, I mean position, you absolutely have the right, I don't have the position to be that fussy. It's, it's good if we can attract people with some sort of background in whatever area that, that the committee governs or has actions on.
I have no friends, so I'm gonna have to go find them.
I don't have anything I want to do.
But, you know, we, we've had it up on the website, we've put it out in the paper, we've done little blurbs, that we need people to volunteer, and part of the reason people don't volunteer is meetings go seven hours.
Uh-huh.
And, and they, they don't like the bureaucracy, they don't have the time.
I wish they had time to.
They don't like, they don't like what the, what the committee members are doing, you know, other committee members are doing, so if you can get somebody that's willing to learn, that's, I think, as good as somebody who's got a background in it, and I've, I've seen committee members that have backgrounds in things that are absolute nightmares.
All right, so, brings us back to the question, what are we gonna do about our empty Personnel Board, or Personnel Committee?
So, I make a motion that we appoint Holly, it's what, Holly Chisholm and Doug Bird?
Yes.
And for, for terms of?
For terms of.
One should be one year, or one should be two.
I was gonna say three, I was, I was gonna say, I was gonna say two and three.
Should we not ask them to come in and quite, and, or at least talk to them before we appoint them to, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we're, we're reappointing them.
We're reappointing them to what should have been three-year terms in the first place, we're just restaggering the board.
Yeah.
They were already appointed, they already accepted their appointment for one year, so if they don't want to serve past one year, they can always come yell at us, and then we can either modify their appointment or just make sure we have someone to backfill them. So, I would say Doug for two and Holly for three.
Second.
All right. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Brad, to your concern, my thought is, is that if we want to get to know the, the committee members better, we can definitely make a plan to do that, tonight's not the night. All right. So, all in favor of the appointment of Holly and, Dan, Doug, Doug, thank you, of Holly and Doug to terms of three and two years respectively to the Personnel Committee, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Monthly report schedule, in the interest of time, I'd like to kick this one out.
Yes, please.
Three-fiftieth committee, do we need to deal with that tonight, Brad?
Yeah, I would like, I mean, we just need to vote to extend the terms.
Okay, oh, and that's right, and last time, we couldn't do it because you have to recuse yourself.
Right.
All right, so.
I'll make a motion that we extend the terms of Brad Kudelski and, who was the other person?
Oh, it was five.
Oh.
Linda Shelby, Christina Stradella, and Don Taft.
Okay, all of those people that he stated, I'm making the motion to extend their.
Point two.
To the end of the year, correct?
Yeah, and we, will be done once we have a meeting, we just haven't been able to have a meeting.
Okay, through, through December 31st.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Did you second that? You have to second it.
Yeah, I can't say anything about it.
He can't say anything, yes, you're saying.
Oh, oh, okay, oh, that's right, I'm, I'm so used to needing him to second, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, and he's recusing himself, got it. All right, so that was done for here's, all right, and that goes to here, all right, Coach Mounttown, right?
We already talked about that.
The downtown recovery bill funding request clarification, Kelly, do we cover this tonight?
Yes, we do, we absolutely got to do this, and it'll take me five minutes. So, we were supposed to get $250 from downtown recovery fund, which was excess ARPA money from the state that they were gonna give to all the towns, and we were just supposed to get it in the bank, so you said, okay, here's $80,000 for a fire system, and here's $100 for the fixing of the upstairs, and so we said, okay, we've got people, we've got bids, we're gonna, we're gonna, we need, where's the money? It didn't hit the bank yet, we went looking for it, it never got off the governor's desk, so nobody got it.
Ooh, so there isn't.
Right, so I need you to rescind the two votes for the ARPA, for the downtown recovery money, which is on your little spreadsheet.
Mm-hmm.
And then what I would like you to do is allocate the $177,000 for those two projects combined, that's remaining in the ARPA funds. Now, we didn't get the grant for the Rice Corner Road culvert, so you don't need to, you don't need that either, so you actually have 200 and something thousand left in unallocated ARPA funds.
Oh, because basically the, the alloc, the allocation of some money against a potential grant, we didn't get the grant, so the money's now available for allocation again.
Correct.
Okay. So, $177,000 and change for the town hall?
Yes.
And that still leaves us.
Which would replace the two votes minus whatever the difference is, because it's like, I don't know.
Right.
You have to look at your spreadsheet and do the math.
Yeah, yeah, it was a. I don't, yeah, Lori's spreadsheet had the, had the right amount, or no, your spreadsheet had the.
Yeah, I will get out by the two.
Okay.
So, there's another one in there, Beth, with.
The one with the highlighting on it?
With the highlighting on it, yeah.
Got it, sorry.
So, I split it, so you can see what you need to rescind.
Okay, so.
And then what I'm asking for is you to reallocate what the remaining, I, I don't think I'm gonna need it all, but it's better to have it than not.
Okay, so we need to rescind the vote of March 31st, 2023, for, what is it, $180,000 for the town hall ballroom renovation and fire alarm system, is that correct?
Yeah, it was, yes, yes, that is what you are rescinding.
Second. All right. All in favor of rescinding that allocation of revitalization money to those two projects, say aye.
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 And then we'd like to, and, so then we need to make a motion to allocate those funds from the existing ARPA funds.
Correct.
Okay, so I make a motion that we allocate $180,000 from the currently.
You can't allocate, you can't do that much, because you didn't rescind the 56.
Because we haven't rescised 56.
You can only do the total, and I'm happy with 170, because I think the redoing upstairs is gonna come in less, but I don't know where the, I've got a $12,000 engineering project just for the fire hydrant without the fire.
So, I'll give, give you a motion of $170,000 in, in overall town hall improvements, per the earlier discussion, split across the, the ballroom and the fire alarm, as required to execute both projects.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor of $170,000 of ARPA money allocated for the town hall, ballroom and town hall fire alarm projects, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so, Kelly, on the ARPA money, the 101,000 for the, is the Mass Works project, the Rice Corner Road that fell, that fell apart, or is it?
No, it's the 56.
Okay.
The Mass Works project is the connection between East and West, East and Brookfield for the water, for the water system.
Oh, that's the water project, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that money's still tied up, but 56,000's coming, is, is, is available now.
It's available for you to rescind and then reallocate, but until you rescind it, it's designated to that project, and that, we did not get the grant for that project.
Then why don't we rescind that now and, and tidy that up, and it'll just be available for allocation at a future meeting?
You can do that if you'd like.
All right. Could I get a motion to that effect?
I motion that we rescind the culvert project earmark for ARPA money for $56,000.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, Kelly, was that all we needed for the?
That's it for the downtown recovery bill clarification.
All right. Cultural council parade permit request.
All right, I make a motion.
They haven't published the route.
I, I, I make a motion that we approve the parade permit for Sunday, September 17th, 2023.
I think Tom has the original, I think you all have an original, I don't know why you all have an original, I don't know.
No, I think it's just a really good copy, I don't know, maybe.
Yes, I have this, I have the one with sign here on it.
His is in color, we'll sign that one.
All right, so you've made the motion?
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor of approving the permit for the Sunday, September 17th, the route being Mill Street, going up Pleasant Street to Central Street, right on Central Street to Route Nine, then along Route Nine to Common Street, along Common Street, then down Central Street, past Town Hall, then back down Pleasant Street to the Highway Barn where they started. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let me sign this.
Pass it along.
Yes. Pass that along. We have a cemetery deed to sign, almost there, Beth.
This is the last thing? Oh, you gotta approve all those minutes.
I'm gonna keep the minutes down the table, actually, no, we don't have to.
You have to have them approved by August 31st.
Okay, then we're gonna have to do that, and, oh, oh, we have appointment, we, we have appointments, do you need?
Do you?
No, 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 the.
We already did them.
No, but they have to be signed, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, so just sign two, and Beth signs them, and she's the clerk.
All right, hold on.
We already voted them.
I know, I'm just, I'm just double checking the dates. One difference here, we, we approved, we appointed Doug for two-year term.
Oh, he's here, he's time to expire.
Oh, and these are both, these are both.
I will man, I will line out and, and initial.
There we go. All right, hold on.
Which makes it legal, single line.
Okay, Holly was three years, so she's going to 2026.
On the date. Yes.
And today is the 24th.
Yes.
And you are not the clerk.
Oh, my goodness, I'm screwing things up, all right.
No, you're just very enthusiastic and helpful.
I, that's, that's the source of a lot of screwing things up. Just ask my, just ask me about my kids.
Cemetery deed.
Yeah, cemetery deed, there's, where's my other thing to be signed? I can see we're close to the end, minutes. I am finding it.
Yeah, I think it's in a blue folder, in your folder.
It's, I've got a blue one that says, "Select Board Minutes," and this, I know, I know I saw another sign meeting.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we, where is the?
Yeah, we make our notes. Thank you, Brad.
Good job, Brad.
Oh, it's, it was in a Manila folder inside a blue folder.
I was so blue.
The cemetery deed is received of Ronald and Sandra Cochur of South Maple Street, um, so it looks like they're paying us for a lot in the cemetery.
All right, I'll make a motion that we sign the, uh, cemetery deed for the Cochers.
Second.
All right, all in favor of signing cemetery deeds, say aye.
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 All right, and, just, wait. Uh, there are three cemetery deeds here. It said, it says, "Sign cemetery deed singular in the agenda," I'm sorry. Um, I also have a cemetery deed here for James A. Cook and Lee Ann Daly Cook, uh, for eight hundred dollars, and another one for Teresa Grubbs, uh, Six Harwood Cross Road for eight hundred dollars. Um, could I get motions to sign both of these deeds also, please?
I'll make a motion to sign, uh, both deeds as read.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda, so I just had the dates and the minutes to read off, but I can't find the one that had it listed.
My system's getting worse and worse.
Oh, it is on there.
All right, cemetery deeds are signed, and now last on the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of, uh, August third, twenty-three, seven twenty-seven, twenty-three, three nine twenty-one, three thirty-one twenty-one, four nine twenty-one, four twenty-two one, and seven nine nineteen.
Some of those are double, that's because they're executive session.
Cause they're executive session, and, and it's strictly for the approval of the minutes, not for release of any executive minutes.
All right.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the, uh, we have, we've exhausted the agenda. I will take a motion to adjourn at nine oh-nine.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor to get out of here, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.